To order please, Mrs. Senter, can you call the roll?
Mr. Damianni.
Here.
Mrs. Intihar.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Kniggers.
Here.
Mr. Roman.
Here.
Mrs. Hackhill will be late. Mrs. Swanson.
Here.
And Principal DeSalva, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In communication with the whole school. Welcome District 200 Board of Education Dr. Harris, district office members. Yes. Lowell staff, parents, community members, our PTA co-presidents Kristi Harris and Ally Landstrom. Thank you for coordinating the wonderful treats we have this evening, and Lowell students. I'd like to recognize the Lowell staff members who are here with us tonight for their exemplary work they do every day with the students. Would you please stand and be recognized? We've had a lot of changes, as you know, in the last few years, and they are really working hard to meet expectations and go above and beyond each and every day to meet students' needs. I'd like to thank the Lowell parents for their continual support. We have many here tonight because we have a little surprise for you a little bit later on. And tonight, I just wanted to share with you a snapshot of what we've been up to since This is Lowell School. Thank you. Here's the first day of school in August, and I really love this. This is one of my favorite times of year because you can just see the looks of anticipation on those faces. That's kindergarten and first grade, second grade over on the right, and just getting ready for a great school year. These are the parents, and the dog even wants to come to Lowell School. This is our traditional first day of school assembly where we get them all up and excited about learning again and starting a brand-new school year and working to the best of their We may not be the only school who does this, but we do have our back-to-school social outside. It's a nice, open environment. Parents have a chance to sign up for conferences, helping out in the classroom, and it's just a nice way to kick off the school year about a week after school starts. This is just a representative example, including the teacher scarecrow of the wonderful staff that we have at Lowell. You may recognize Mrs. Bellini from our website. She is our school mascot for safety. She really makes coming to school, especially on Walk to School Day, a special treat for all of us. This is a little picture of one of the many things that we had happening at Halloween, fifth-grade classroom. We celebrated PE feats by having a circus where we invite parents to come in. Every 20 minutes, a new group of parents comes in and they put on a spectacular gymnastics We also celebrate our English-language learner Thanksgiving for some of our students. It's the first time they have actually shared a meal together with the traditional trimmings of turkey and sentence starters and just facilitating conversation. The beauty of it was working together with the Jericho Road Church volunteers and also having all of the children stand up before we ate and express what they were thankful for. Moving on to school improvement. I'm sure all the board members have read our school improvement plan, but what I wanted to do is just give you a little snapshot of what it is and what it looks like at Lowell School. We are continuing to focus on using nonfiction text, which is big and upcoming in the Common Core, and we found with our assessment data that it's really not that different between literature and informational comprehension. But our data said maybe we better focus in on main idea and details. So what we're doing with that is every grade level took out the English-language Common Core and took apart the main idea and details and put together, using an essential standards form, a plan for how we were going to ensure that all kids would learn how to identify main idea and details and how we would use Common Formative Assessments to monitor their progress. In reading, we are using, as in math, professional learning communities to facilitate those discussions and using data to inform instruction. Teachers are using guided reading instruction in classrooms in first through fifth grade and starting shortly in kindergarten to ensure that they're with appropriate levels of text. And everyone will be assessing their students using the Fonda-Simpson-Pennell reading assessments this year, twice a year. This is what guided reading looks like in grade two today. Guided reading in fourth grade, a little bigger, a few more students. And this is what they do when they're not working with their teacher, meaningful work. This is an example of a first-grade class writing down the words with the word pattern for the week, using a different color for the vowels than the consonants. Some use clay. And then, writing is another component. They choose their own topics and they write for a certain period of time. They read to self or they read with a partner. Here's somebody reading to self with a phone, so she can actually hear herself read aloud. Moving on to math. Again, focusing in on using professional learning communities and data to make informed instructional decisions. We are really targeting number sense because that's what our data indicated this year and different goals for every grade level, and math computation and making sure that all of our students are ready for sixth grade with that fact mastery. So what we're doing in third grade, they're using the Fast Math computer program in the lab two to three days a week. Second grade will start up second semester. Our fourth-grade students are using a program called Rocket Math, and our fifth-grade students are using a mathematics program. Our PE teacher, Mrs. Menzer, wrote a grant, and you'll see what that looks like. This is Fast Math in third grade. Imagine another 23 or 24 students doing that at the same time. This is what Rocket Math looks like. They practice their facts orally, they have a checker, and then they take a written test. And they add two facts and their fact families each time. They are focused on fourth grade, all fourth-grade classrooms, for about 10 to 15 minutes a day, and then they take one-minute time tests and move on. And this is how they track their progress, individually, not a group, to see how they're performing. Mathematics happens right here in the gym. We don't always have the maths out, but at the end of fifth grade, for five to eight At the end of fifth grade, for five to eight minutes, students come in here, go through At the end of fifth grade, for five to eight minutes, students come in here, go through minutes, students come in here, go through flashcards with a partner. flashcards with a partner. flashcards with a partner. They have their own individual folders as well, and our goal is to start with addition, They have their own individual folders as well, and our goal is to start with addition, They have their own individual folders as well, and our goal is to start with addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division, just five to eight minutes a day, and they subtraction, multiplication, and division, just five to eight minutes a day, and they subtraction, multiplication, and division, just five to eight minutes a day, and they track and keep their own progress. track and keep their own progress. track and keep their own progress. And that's another picture with our PE teacher over there facilitating the activity. And that's another picture with our PE teacher over there facilitating the activity. And that's another picture with our PE teacher over there facilitating the activity. So I just wanted to thank you so much with our third-grade snowflakes, which I'm sure So I just wanted to thank you so much with our third-grade snowflakes, which I'm sure So I just wanted to thank you so much with our third-grade snowflakes, which I'm sure you've seen hanging in our hallways, for all that you do to ensure the success of not you've seen hanging in our hallways, for all that you do to ensure the success of not you've seen hanging in our hallways, for all that you do to ensure the success of not only Lowell School but District 200. only Lowell School but District 200. only Lowell School but District 200. And as a special treat to you, we have some friends who will be coming in shortly. And as a special treat to you, we have some friends who will be coming in shortly. And as a special treat to you, we have some friends who will be coming in shortly. Our Lowell chorus, we couldn't get them all here tonight, but luckily we do have a representative Our Lowell chorus, we couldn't get them all here tonight, but luckily we do have a representative Our Lowell chorus, we couldn't get them all here tonight, but luckily we do have a representative example. 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 Under the direction of Ms. Hayes, we'll get you in the spirit of the holiday season by Under the direction of Ms. Hayes, we'll get you in the spirit of the holiday season by Under the direction of Ms. Hayes, we'll get you in the spirit of the holiday season by kicking it off. At the end of fifth grade, for five to eight minutes, students come in here, go through flashcards with a partner. They have their own individual folders as well, and our goal is to start with addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division, just five to eight minutes a day, and they track and keep their own progress. And that's another picture with our PE teacher over there facilitating the activity. So I just wanted to thank you so much with our third-grade snowflakes, which I'm sure you've seen hanging in our hallways, for all that you do to ensure the success of not only Lowell School but District 200. And as a special treat to you, we have some friends who will be coming in shortly. Our Lowell chorus, we couldn't get them all here tonight, but luckily we do have a representative example. Under the direction of Ms. Hayes, we'll get you in the spirit of the holiday season by kicking it off. Thank you Lowell Fourth and Fifth Grade Chorus and Ms. Hayes, that was a bravo performance. Thank you Lowell Fourth and Fifth Grade Chorus and Ms. Hayes, that was a bravo performance. Thank you Lowell Fourth and Fifth Grade Chorus and Ms. Hayes, that was a bravo performance. Thank you Lowell Fourth and Fifth Grade Chorus and Ms. Hayes, that was a bravo performance. That's our dress rehearsal for our winter concert, which is next Monday night. So thank you very much. Well, thank you, and I don't know about the rest of you, but my blood pressure's just gone down, and it's very... That is a great way to start both the meeting and this part of the season, so thank you so much. Next, we have communications or modifications to the agenda, but first I want to see if you're here and you're either a staff member or parent of children. You're certainly welcome to stay, but know that this is a busy time of year, so please feel free to also leave, and we won't hold that against you. Are there any modifications to the agenda that either board or staff wish to make? If there's none, we will move on to public comments. There are two people signed up for public comment tonight. We ask that you confine your comments to three minutes. Public comments are important to the board, however, it's the board's policy not to take action on items until time has been taken to gather information and discuss all options, so please know that lack of action does not imply lack of interest in the issues. The first person signed up to speak is Mary Ann Paton.
Listed on this evening's agenda, raising the levy, building a new preschool. Does this board, with the exception of Mr. Damianni, ever ask themselves, where does the money come from? Does it come from working harder in the district, being innovative, being fiscally savvy with spending money wisely, sacrifice, endurance? Yes, it does. But not from school district employees, but from others, the taxpayers. Dr. Harris, I know, expressed several weeks ago at a legislative breakfast that he needs more revenue. Wouldn't we all like more revenue, especially in this very tough economy we all live in? Unlike a business owner that reaps the benefit of risk, reward, and sacrifice, the revenue here comes from others. The government schools you oversee receive your money. You receive it no matter how hard you work or how successful you are. You automatically get it, and you get a pay increase every year with no sweat and no pressure. I have said for years you have a spending problem, not a funding problem. Eighty percent of the school's budget goes to salaries and benefits. Benefits, the likes of which the majority of private sector taxpayers in this district don't come close to receiving, yet we are expected to pick up the tab. Test scores have flatlined, as Mrs. Swanson mentioned at the legislative breakfast, proof that more money does not equate better education, yet this board has used this as reasoning to approve contracts year after year we could not afford. In our recent PSAE test, almost 25% of students at both high schools were below standards or on academic warning. I don't know how this board in clear conscience can vote to increase the levy at all when we read in the paper that the Glen Ellen Food Pantry is in dire need of donations. They're experiencing four new people a day, many people of the not of work, underemployed, or in fear of losing their jobs. Until I see the administrators of this district start paying 10% or more toward their pension, 20% or more toward their benefits, stop taking car allowances. Your claims of needing more revenue are hypocritical and egregious. Stop paying money we don't have to the IASB, NASB, and any other lobbying group whose goal it is to get more taxpayer dollars out of people. They're not serving the students of this district or the state or the country. It is not a matter of if Illinois will implode financially, but when. With the looming threat of pensions being shifted, less tax dollars coming in from high unemployment, it is unbelievable that this board is actually looking to build a new school, not to mention the revenues needed to help all of the other schools in the district keep from falling apart. Until you address the 80% of the budget and start cutting the bloat at the district administration level and get in the real world of finances, you have no right to come to taxpayers for more money for a tax levy increase, a new school, or anything else. Actions speak louder than words. Prove to us that you are going to do right by the students and taxpayers of this district. Start getting extra revenue from the 80% of the budget and give it to the students where it belongs. Until you show us this, you have no credibility to ask any more money of us.
Thank you. Jan Shaw, excuse me, sorry.
It's okay. My rating must not have been the best. I'm Jan Shaw. I have raised four children, all of which went kindergarten, grade 12. My youngest is now in college. I've been bopping into these school board meetings on and off probably for close to 20 years now. Things haven't changed that much. This summer, I decided to take the tour of Jefferson when you guys were offering that, just to see what was happening there. The teachers were very proud of the work they're doing and how well the students are doing. The teacher who showed me around the building kept pointing out things that were really kind of cute, kind of nice, this, that, and the other thing. She had to actually stop and think what she was supposed to remember to point out that was wrong. The bathrooms are too small, especially for kids with wheelchairs or walkers. We have room air conditioners. I went to school with no air conditioning. Please. We have to use the hallways for some of the one-on-one working with kids on large motor skills. Every school I've been in in this district uses the hallways for something. It's no big deal. The current Jefferson, I came away thinking it's adequate, it's not optimal, but I'm also thinking we really can't afford something new. The current Jefferson holds 289 students. I'm told the proposed one's going to be 476. Looking at the footprint, it looks like it's two or three times the size. I also know that currently the school is about 2/3 special needs students. They're proposing that the new school will be 2/3 special needs students. Are we really going to increase the number of special needs preschoolers by 50%, just like we are the total enrollment? Where are these kids coming from? Do we expect that many more to be born with special needs? Or are we creating a magnet that's going to entice families to move to this district because they have a special needs child and these surrounding districts don't handle them well? In addition to the cost of the school itself, how much additional money is it going to cost for the additional teachers, teachers aides, and buses for these kids to go to preschool? Once they get here and they go to preschool here, are they going to go kindergarten, 12th grade here? Most likely. What's the additional cost to the other schools in the district? Can they handle this? Have you thought this all the way through? I know, and I was actually surprised the other day that we had preschool in the district. Kind of heard rumblings about it, but was surprised. Preschool hasn't been in school districts very long. Why is preschool in school districts? Now that we've had it for a while, are the kids who go to the district preschool better prepared for kindergarten and for life than those students who went to a private preschool or part district or stay home with their mothers? Which children are doing better? Are we actually getting benefit for dollars? Are we simply spending money on a government-paid daycare service? Anyway, getting back to bottom line, the cost of this, it looks like we're not going to be paying for it until a few years out. You decided not to let the taxpayers see how much this is costing by not paying any of the interest or the bonds off until one of the existing bonds rolls off and is paid off, and we're supposed to have our taxes going down, the taxes will stay up or maybe go up slightly, so we're not going to be so freaked out by this thing? Why don't we wait until one of those bonds retires and then do this instead of doing it now? We've just paid for Hubble. We did two gorgeous additions to the high school, which, by the way, are gorgeous but more than we needed. We did all the grade schools. I'm not even convinced, given the state and the federal government's economic things, that preschool is going to still be something we can afford in the grade schools. Just saying, as a taxpayer, we're taxed enough already. Please wait on this referendum. Wait until we're certain we can do it. And furthermore, don't build the Taj Mahal. Don't build something so big. Don't build a magnet that's going to be pulling more special needs children into the district that we're going to have to educate the whole way through. Yes, they need to be educated, but we don't need to educate everybody. We need to educate the kids who are here. And I guess that's the end of what I had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we move to Superintendent Pinkhorn.
Thank you, Mrs. Swanson. Good evening, board members. Before I begin this morning getting into some details and content, I would like to introduce a person, two people down to my left. Joyce Myers is here this evening, watching and being trained by Mrs. Senter. Joyce is currently one of our administrative assistants in the IT department, and she is going to be the backup for Mrs. Senter, so she'll be here tonight and again in January. So I just wanted to make note of that, and she is learning all the details of this role and the responsibilities that go along with it. So she will be our... We have a retirement coming up next week of Jenny Pearl, who's been in that role for numerous years, and now Joyce is going to fill that responsibility moving forward. So welcome, Joyce. The educator in me had to take an opportunity to talk about this evening the significance of today, 12-12-12. It is a unique mathematical date here, and so I did a little searching this afternoon to look up a few things and what I could find out in the Google world, and, you know, I ran across just a couple items, and I wanted to share them with the board and with the community. First of all, December 12, 2012, or 12-12-12 is the last major numerical date for the 21st century, so it won't happen again until 1-1-01. So it's a long time, and probably not a lot of us will be around at that time. So it is unique in that regard. I don't know, maybe we will. I don't know, but you never know. A couple other key things have caught my eye. One is number crunchers have a profound respect for the number 12, mainly because of the divisibility capabilities. After all, it can be divided into halves, thirds, fourths, sixths, and twelfths. Little math lesson here this evening. So it can be assumed that mathematicians will find 12-12-12 to be three times more exciting than their normal 12 day. Thought that was clever. One final thing, little international flavor here. According to Chinese numerology, the number 1 is a yang number, which is ruled by the sun and represents independence and individualism. 2 is a yin number, which is ruled by the moon and represents symmetry and balance. When placed together, the number 12 brings harmony to the yin and the yang, balancing the feminine energy of the moon and the masculine energy of the sun, so we can figure that today 12-12-12 equals lots of harmony. So, set the tone here for our meeting, for the community and audience. I thought these were very relevant things that I bring to your attention, pieces of trivia and information. I hope that the yin and yang is on our side this evening as we continue to move forward with the work at the district. So thank you for indulging me there for a couple minutes, but I had to share the significance of today's date. Now on to more pressing issues in the school district. I just want to draw the attention to board members of three items that you have in your green folders here this evening. The first one is two brochures that you will see here, tri-folded, I believe they are in there, highlighting our ELO program, one of them in English, one of them in Spanish. It's just a nice brochure that was put together by staff and wanted to point out some of the changes in the information as we continue to meet the needs of the students in District 200. And our ELO program continues to grow and mature and evolve, and this brochure is a very easy way and quick way to identify our current programming across the district. So thank you for staff for putting this together. Appreciate that. Two other items in the folder that I would like to spend some time talking about just for a few minutes is a little bit of a preview for the committee, the home meetings that we will be undertaking after the first of the year, focusing on two topics, one of them being curriculum and instruction and the other one being finances. Let's... I'm going to spend one minute first on curriculum instruction. Take a look at the diagram in your green folders that has some images on it here with its flow chart, and I want just to point out a couple things. This past week, I had our monthly K-12 principals' meeting, and one of the things that Faith Dalquist and I continue to work toward across the district is to try to make sense of all of the outside influences that are going on in public education, how they impact District 200. So we put together this diagram that we shared with the K-12 principals last week, and we intend to go out to all schools after the first of the year and spend time with the staffs and faculties at all buildings, talking about where we're at in public education in 2013. And if you just follow me quickly, 10 years ago, NCLB was probably one of the most significant pieces of federal legislation that's impacted public education in a long, long time. 10 years, fast forward 10 years, primarily the remnants of NCLB are about done. And now, there were some lessons learned along the way, and I know the board is very aware of a lot of things that have happened and resulted in NCLB. There were some good things that happened. Couple good things were, we use student data to guide our practice and instruction. That's an important piece. We also are paying attention to learners such as ELO, special education, poverty-ridden students. students, though, on to be able to target our instruction to meet their needs. So practice has improved. There were some benefits from that legislation and certainly play out in our schools on a daily basis. However, we have a whole new set of legislation that most recently, at the federal level and at the state level, is, been passed. SB 7, which has been driving a lot of the reform efforts in the state. PAR, which is an assessment consortium that is guiding our curriculum instruction and our assessments that we will be accountable for in the very near future. And finally, PERA, which is the performance evaluation law that has updated responsibilities and the accountability for teachers and building principals. So these pieces of legislation certainly have had an impact and are going to have a significant impact moving forward, I believe, for many years to come. And so, to help principals and staff, teachers navigate some of this, you can see the next four items there. And we have had some conversations here at the Board table about each one of these and some of the changes that are in front of us. The assessments, we continue to look and improve our common assessments across the district. We also will be getting new state assessments, K-8, very, very soon, in the next couple of years, and we'll be getting an update on that after the first of the year. Common Core curriculum, we've had many conversations about where we're headed in the Common Core and the expectations and how we're going to integrate that into District 200. Principal-teacher evaluation systems have changed, and the accountability component of being responsible directly for student achievement is in the works. And finally, the surveying, that I mentioned a month or two ago, that is now being required as part of the state report card, where we will survey students, parents, and staff and get feedback on it. The message that Faith and I felt was so important was what's in that box? And if you look what's in that box, these are the things that we talked about. If we focus here, which is the things we have going on in every school, and you heard a little bit of it here this evening from Mrs. DeSalvo and Lowell, then all of these other things will take care of themselves. We will meet these expectations as they are placed upon us from outside District 200. If we're focused on the four things inside the box and stay the course, college and career readiness, 21st century learning skills, new learning standards, and professional learning communities. So, and none of those terms or none of those phrases should be new to Board members. As long as we continue to focus our teaching and learning, our professional development, and gearing our dollars in that box, that's where the benefits will come. Kids will learn at a high level and will continue to move forward in District 200. So I wanted to share this with the Board and let you know that Faith and I will be going on the road to all the buildings after the first of the year and having conversations with staff and helping them understand the big picture and what's going on in public education. Questions from Board members before I jump into finance for a minute? So we will be getting updates in both January and in February at the Community Home Meetings on Common Core and also our PLCs, and where we're at and where we're headed in the near future. Questions from any Board members on this diagram? Hopefully, this is something you can use and reference on a regular basis. I will continue to bring it back and kind of tell you where we're at every time we bring something up. Where does it fit here in the big picture? Any questions from Board members? Okay, finally, finances. As Board members know, we do have one major item this evening on the agenda, which is the levy, and certainly Mr. Farley's going to provide the detailed information here this evening moving forward. But right after the first of the year at our Community the Home Meeting, we will be having a lengthy report, an update on the Board on projections, on where we're headed from all of our revenues and also our expenditures. And I wanted to point out to Board members in your folders this evening, which has been posted on the district website for public use, is the first quarter financial update. And I want to point out a couple key items here, that both expenditures and revenues are trending right on target. On the revenue side, we are still one quarter behind from the state. They have caught up. They did pay us from the last fiscal year. However, they haven't made the first quarter payment yet. The one was due to us on September 30th. But they did back pay us on all the payments from last fiscal year. So you do see a little bit of revenue there coming in, in state dollars for our categorical grants, and that shows there on the chart. Expenditures also are trending right on target. The only thing that I want to point out, teachers are not paid in the months of July and August, and so therefore, you know, it always picks up as the years goes along, and we will, we are though, right on target as far as our expenditures go. So I encourage Board members, if you have any questions, please let myself or Mr. Farley know. And I wanted to make sure and point out to the community that this information is posted on a quarterly basis on the website to update our current financial situation on a quarterly basis. And all of the detail behind these charts and graphs is also available if you want to dig into the spreadsheets and look at actually the revenue sources and the expenditure targets as well. You know, the other thing that we'll continue to watch very carefully here over the next few weeks is the legislators in Springfield, as they continue to struggle with how to deal with the debt situation that they have in front of them and how it directly impacts us, not only on the pension obligations that tend to be a big part of that, but also on the general state aid, our categorical grants, and basically the whole revenue flow of monies from Springfield. I believe it is much more complex. You know, obviously, we look through it through one lens. In other words, what's it going to mean to us? However, it is much broader picture, and I know there continues to be a lot of opportunity for many people to weigh in on that topic. I encourage not only Board members, but also community members to contact your legislator. That's the best way to have an impact on where we're headed when it comes to state revenues and state expenditures. And we do rely upon that, and so it is important moving forward. But we will include those projections after the first of the year at the Community the Home Meeting in our projections for the next fiscal years when we begin our budget process after the first of the year. So in conclusion, I'd say happy holidays to the Board and to the community, and see you next year. That concludes the Superintendent's report unless there's any questions.
Any questions? Well, thank you very much, and you'll see us for the next 45 minutes or so at least. You're not going anywhere yet.
That's right.
All right. Consent agenda items, we have eight items on the consent agenda. Acceptance of a gift to Pleasant Hill Elementary School. Approval to post-revised policy 7.270 administering medicines to students for public review and comment. Approval to post-revised policy 7.70 student attendance and transit for public review and comment. Approval to proposed policy 4.15 identity protection for public review. Approval to purchase playground equipment for Pleasant Hill School. Approval of bills payable and payroll. Approval of minutes November 14, 2012, open and closed. Approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to July 2011 as allowable by law. And approval of personnel report and supplemental personnel report. Are there any items that Board members wish to remove from the consent agenda? If not, I will take a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Moved by Jim. Seconded by Bar. Any questions or comments about the consent agenda? Yes.
Oh, the green line says go. Yeah, again, a couple things here. The Pleasant Hill grant, $600 coming from Walmart. A number of teachers, and Mrs. Salvo even indicated that a PE teacher here wrote a grant and got some money. I guess I'd like to know how many, I mean, these teachers ought to be named. I mean, they are wonderful. Grant writing is not easy. And for them to put all the stuff down and to go for these grants that are out there, and the number of grants that teachers are doing to help us, I'd like to know, I'd like to know who these people are and recognize them. There was no name on this one for the Pleasant Hill one. Mr. Salvo mentioned that, but I think that's just fabulous, that the teachers are going out of their way, knowing that we've got to continue to raise money, you know, and I'm excited about what the teachers are doing for, for that. And, you know, that being said, again, thank you for Walmart for the $600 to Pleasant Hill. But somewhere along the line, let's find out who all these teachers are that are writing all these different grants and bringing all these extra funds, just like the PTA contributes so many thousands of dollars a year and so on.
This particular grant, and I asked Mrs. Farley to correct me if I'm wrong, is the nurse at Pleasant Hill saw it through a private sector. A lot of the grants like this, they're private sector grants, and Walmart had an opportunity there for school nurses. She applied and she got it. So it's always nice to get those nice gifts to be able to supplement our programs. In this case, it was the nurse's office at Pleasant Hill. So I'm correct, right? Yeah, correct. But you are, we do have resourceful staff members that do go out and seek private dollars to help supplement our programs across the district.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I will call for the vote. Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mrs. Inteher?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Kudiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson? Yes. The consent agenda is approved. And now we come to our one action item for tonight, which is adoption of the 2012 levy. Is there a presentation on this before we go for a motion?
Thank you, Mrs. Swanson. Yes, we are going to do a presentation on the 2012 levy. This presentation was presented in Finance Committee a couple months ago, and we had lengthy discussion there, both with Mr. Gambiani and Mrs. Swanson at the committee, and now we're bringing it forth for the entire Board on this annual request of Board to approve the levy to move it forward to the county. So, Mr. Farley?
Thank you, Dr. Harris. As mentioned, this was run through the Finance Committee, as was done in the past year. The Board was given a copy of the presentation at the last meeting. I'm going to run through some terms here real quickly because I will use them throughout the presentation. So everybody has a little bit of background. I'm sure most of the Board is aware of this. The aggregate levy, as I will discuss today, is really the operating funds of the budget. It's the ED Fund, the O&amp;M Fund, Transportation, IMRF. Our debt service levies is the bond and interest fund, which pays our principal and interest on our debt, and this levy is separate. PTAL is the property tax extension limitation law that went back, went into effect back in the early 90s, and as the Board is aware, it's also called tax caps. It basically limits the amount that taxing bodies in DuPage County, it's approved county by county, so not everybody in the state has tax caps. We are under caps here in DuPage County. But it basically limits the amount that the district can ask for over the prior year by the Consumer Price Index or the inflation factor that is used nationally. So I will reference the CPI quite a bit as well. We track that throughout the year, and I've got some graphs that'll show you where it's been and where we're going. So the CPI is 3% for this year. Up for 2011, it's always advances a year or so. For the 2012 levy, we'll use the CPI for 2011. Equalized assets value, that is a factor that goes into play when calculating the tax rate for the school district and all the taxing bodies. And as everyone's aware, the EAV are of, in the area and all throughout the state and nation is falling dramatically. You know, property values have decreased as the economy has taken a turn, especially in the housing market. So these are some of the terms that I will discuss throughout. As I mentioned, the CPI is the inflation factor that is used for tax caps. It's issued monthly by the Bureau of Labor Statistics. We do track it throughout the year. The December number is always the important number. That is the one that would be used for the tax levy purpose. So wherever the CPI lands in December of every given year, that is the CPI that is used. In December of 2011, the CPI was 3%. That number was made public in January. As we went through the negotiation process and looking at our long-term finances, that was the number that was used, gave us a preview for this levy. We also use the factor going forward in our projections of 2.5%, which I have a chart will show, has been the average over the years. The Consumer Price Index, as we've talked about in the past, seems to be heavily driven by the cost of gasoline. So as gas goes up or down, it seems to drive the CPI going forward, and I'll show a graph here that illustrates what can happen as gasoline rises and decreases. But it really is not an indicator of how we do business. We obviously use buses and that, so that impacts the price of gasoline, but our, and how it's been previously mentioned, our main expenditures are tied to salary and benefits. Benefit costs are going up. We are not immune from, for lack of a better word, Obamacare. The costs and penalties associated with that are going to have impact on us, and we are reviewing those now as the process went through the Supreme Court and the election. And obviously, it's become very apparent that it's not going to go away. We're starting to see a lot of information flowing as to what Obamacare really means and what it'll mean to the school district and everyone, basically. So, you know, as you look at that benefit line item in the budget, there's some concern there as well. Here's a chart that shows, you know, illustrates where the CPI has been over the last 10 years. On average, it's been right around 2.5%. When we use the PMA model, that's the number we use for a projection going forward for CPI. I mentioned the cost of gasoline in 2007, when gasoline spiked very high. You can see the CPI shot up. In 2008, when gasoline crashed in September and October of that year, the CPI dropped dramatically, almost to zero. So over time, it's been up and down, but it's averaged out at about 2.5%. The ceiling, by the way, for the CPI is 5%, which has never been hit. It was put into place back in the early 90s, as I mentioned, and they put 5% in there because they were very concerned at the time that the CPI would be over 5%. But in the time since the Consumer Price Index has been used, it's never reached 5%. We actually had our highest and lowest CPI over the long term of tax caps in two years, and that was 2007 and 2008. So where will the CPI finish? This is a chart, as I mentioned, that we follow the CPI for 2012, so this is just a quick look ahead. And as you can see, the CPI started out in the year 2.9%. If you all recall, gasoline was, had increased quite a bit, and then we saw some fall off. And now it's, it started coming up again. When I presented this to the committee back in October, it was, we had just gotten the September number, and we knew the CPI was right at about 2%. Using the same index going forward for the next three months, we had a feeling that the CPI would land right at about 2.5%, which is the average, as I've mentioned. The October number is now in, so that is no longer a projection, but it is accurate. It is stated 2.2%. November, we will find out here within the week what that CPI index will be, and then December, we find out in January. Given what you're hearing and seeing at the gas pumps, 2.5% may not be what we see come December. You know, there's obviously concern. It's great at the pumps, but when you, as far as the CPI goes, we could see another crash of that index, so that number could go down, and it could be well below the average. But it's too early to tell at this point. So this is, again, just to look forward real quick. I also spoke about EAV as another factor that really drives the overall tax rate in the school district. And in the period between 2002 and 2008 and '09, when the housing market was going gangbuster and property values were going up considerably at 7 or 8% a clip in our school district, you could see that the EAV went up quite a bit, which dropped the tax rate. When the EAV is rising, the tax rate will go down. Subsequently, when the EAV starts to go down, the tax rate will go up. It's just a factor of how tax caps work. One of the concerns that a lot of school districts have or are running against is that as the EAV drops in school districts and the tax rate goes up, you start to hit your mandatory maximums, and there are school districts out there that are having this issue. It is not an issue for us currently, but were the trend in housing to continue for a number of years, it would be something that we'll have to monitor. But again, hopefully, we'll see some leveling off of property values here, so we don't have that issue. This is a chart that just illustrates where the CPI is and where our extension has actually come in. As I've mentioned, we are, we are bound by the tax cap and the CPI, which is a percentage increase over the year. But we are afforded additional funds as new growth or new construction comes on the tax rolls. You can see in 2010, when the Cantera TIF came onto our tax rolls, very highly successful TIF down in Warrenville that everybody's familiar with, when that TIF ended, we were able to capture the new growth from that TIF, basically the equalized assets valuation jump from the 3 million that was at the time, it was a gravel pit to the time it became what it is today. When that new property came on the tax rolls, that's where we got that jump from that new growth. So over time, you can really see that the increase in new construction over the time when properties were booming, there was a pretty good sized gap between the CPI and the amount we garnered. the amount we garnered from new growth. But as, you know, the decline in the CPI, as well as the decline in new housing and new construction, you see those, the red line and the blue line kind of get closer to each Here's just an illustration on chart over the years. We were right around $30 million of new construction growth each year that was coming onto the tax rolls. Again, that was anything that was built new, tear downs, anything that was basically put onto the property tax rolls that wasn't there before or had been raised and then built new. In 2010, again, you can see the impact of Cantera TIF, and when that came on the tax rolls, that was at a time that new construction was starting to go down. You can see it obviously spiked up very high because of that. And right now, we're just under $20 million, so we're about $10 million less on average where we were in prior years, where we could pretty much sitter watch at about $30 million of new growth. And we'll talk about one new factor for this year as well that's happened recently that impacted new construction here as we go forward. So, how much should we receive? As I mentioned, we're bound by the 3% CPI as a maximum. So, our prior, you can see our prior year aggregate levy was the CPI of 3%. And you can see the overall tax levy would go up to about $119 million. Again, that new growth, that $30 million or just under $30 million would garner about 1% on average. So, we can see an additional percent on top of that. The factor that I mentioned as far as what's new this year that's most recently happened, Warrenville had a second TIF that was contiguous to the Cantera TIF, that they closed down five years early. Doesn't always happen. Tiffs, for everyone's knowledge, is a tax increment financing area. It's usually done in blighted areas. The tax EAV for that area is frozen, and we only receive the amount based on that frozen value. And over time, the taxes are still collected, but they use that to spur economic growth within that area. They're very popular in the city of Chicago. So, during that time, as that money comes in, that would normally come to the school district and other taxing bodies, and to use to spur growth in that area. So, Warrenville TIF 2 was slated to end in 2017. The city has decided and took formal action this fall to end that TIF. We should see somewhere in the vicinity of $10 million of new growth coming out of that TIF. So, that is some good news. With all good news comes some other news, and Warrenville is discussing possibly a third TIF. But right now, they're just in the adulation stage of that, so we'll see. We'll obviously monitor and follow that. We also have three TIFs that are currently ongoing in the city of Wheaton, just as an FYI, and we have two in Carroll Stream. But the ending of this TIF really was a nice surprise. So, our overall 2012 levy proposal is charted out here next to the 2000 levy extension. The increase we're requesting is 4.96%. We always levy more than the CPI to capture the new growth. As I mentioned, we've got the Cantera TIF, which accounts for about $10 million, which coupled with the $20 million should add another percent, so we're right around 4%. We don't always know what the, at this point in time, what the EAV or the new growth will be in our school district. So, historically, we've levied more, just to make sure we capture that new growth. And as in the past, you can see here, the blue line illustrates where we've asked what our levy requests have been and what we've actually received as a percentage. This is the history of tax rates. If you take this back over a 10-year period, you'll see that the tax rates were, overall tax rates were decreasing over time as the EAV was going up. And you can see it started to slowly start to increase again over time as property values have decreased. This is an overall summary. The total EAV of the school, and I know it's hard to read, we'll have it on the website, the total EAV of the school district is really comprised of Milton Township, which is our largest township that services the school district. It's also part of Glen Allen School District and some other areas. We also have a bit of Naperville and Winfield. But this just shows where the overall EAV is in those townships and where the overall value of that EAV has gone, as well as the history of the tax extensions over time and the total increase percentage. So, the recommendation is to adopt the levy request, which provides access to the CPI increase that's afforded to us under the tax cap legislation, which is the inflation index that is in law. And again, our request of 4.96% is always higher than what we anticipate receiving based on the CPI and your growth. I'll answer any questions. I know I ran through that quick.
Thank you very much. You always do a great job of both working and putting the levy together in terms of all of these numbers that you have to anticipate and estimate. You do a great job of getting us right where we need to be. Are there any questions or comments from board members?
Bill, when Mariano's opens and that comes back on the tax rolls, what impact will that have on the new growth of EAV in the year 2013? Do you have any idea? You might not.
Obviously, the property came on, it's coming on the tax rolls based on the sale value. Once it's assessed by the Milton Township assessor, we'll have a better feel for what the value of that will be. Obviously, that'll be a great boon to the community, not only from, you know, a commercial standpoint. The city obviously will benefit greatly from the sales tax that'll come from that property. The community will garner 300 jobs from the Marianos that have owned that property, as well as all the taxing bodies, you know, enjoying the benefit of that new growth as it comes on to the tax rolls as well. You know, it's fairly important to note that, you know, we are a bedroom community. We do not have a lot of industry and a lot of, you know, commercial properties. And that comes with, obviously, a great benefit to live here, but it also has an impact when you look at how taxes are distributed. When you talk to Carroll Stream, they don't even have, their city doesn't even have a property tax, because they're so industry and commercially laden that they, the city doesn't even have to, you know, have a property tax. So, but again, to answer your question, Ken, we'll see when, once that property is assessed and how it's going. The other properties throughout the area are doing very well, and I'm assuming that the property value of that will be pretty good. Also worth mentioning is not a TIF.
I thought they were going in sequence. My question was, this has been out there for a while, it was presented before to the committee, and the information's been out, have you received any public comment via the website? And if so, to any degree, you want to summarize them?
There hasn't been any public comment, other than tonight. I do get public comment when the tax bills come out. You know, it's an interesting dynamic in that depending on how, once individual property is assessed, it can have a big impact on how much your tax bill goes up or even down. If you're around the, you know, Milton Township has posted that they're anticipating the overall EAV going down about 6.4%. Again, that's our largest township that services our school district. Naperville and Winfield are out there as well. They're much smaller, but they're still play a factor, and so I'm not sure where theirs are going to be. So, if your, you know, if your home goes down by that percentage, that's pretty much the average, you're probably going to pay right around 3% more. If your home value doesn't go down as much, if, you know, the percentage is lower, you may pay more. If your property values go down even, you know, much greater, then you'll pay less. It's just a function of how the tax caps work.
We have been in interesting times the last couple of years, and it's not only in our community, but also, you know, everywhere in the state of Illinois, because in Page County and specifically. Here's what's happened. When the tax cap legislation passed several years ago, many years ago, it was to protect the taxpayer from EAV rates that shot up, you know, and property values increased tenfold over a period of time. So, the cap was put on to control the increases based on CPI, which is what we have done for many, many years. But what's happened the last couple of years is EAV has gone down, but what happens is that the rate fluctuates with it, and they never anticipated that happened when that legislation passed. And so, that's where some of the anxiety comes in, and people don't understand how that legislation works. The last time voters in this community approved an education rate increase was 1987. And we don't even come close to getting to levying the amount that was approved in 1987 because of the tax cap. Our rate is not, how far off is it, Bill? It's almost a full percentage point, isn't it? Is that correct? Yeah. And we don't even come close to what they approved in 1987 because of the tax cap. But what's happened the last couple of years is, because EAVs went, and now the rates start to creep up to get, you know, more in line. So, again, that was, the legislators had no idea that that would ever happen whenever this legislation went through. But that's where we do get several requests and people questioning why their tax bill went up more when their EAV went down. It's because of that legislation, and the leveling out has taken place over 20 years of nothing but grow, 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 without additional dollars following it. So, it's an interesting time when it comes to, you know, sharing this legislation and how the levy works.
Bill, I know you've explained this many times in the past, but I think it'd be helpful again. What happens if we don't give approval for the maximum amount of a levy up to the CPI index with respect to future years? Can we recapture that if, for example, the CPI should jump in future years and find that we're losing money? And secondly, I've always found this process a little bit of putting the cart before the horse, because we're asking for this levy before we know what we're going to be getting from the state and the federal government with respect to revenues for the future year. So, what thinking is going on in your head as you come to this process of trying, of asking for a proposed levy?
To answer the first question, the district doesn't have the ability to go back and recapture any funds. So, if, because each year's tax levy is predicated off the prior year, if you, you know, if you don't capture the fund, you know, the cost of living increase, as it were, from the CPI, or the, you can't go back and recapture that in future years. You're always predicated off the prior year. So, that's one of the, and I think the tax caps have served their purpose and served it well. They haven't really touched it since that time, and I think it's one of the detrimental things that, you know, makes school districts, you know, capture all of that, because there's really a lot of unknowns. You know, when the CPI crashed to a top of 1%, that really, you know, was a shot across the bow that indicated that there's really, it's really, can fluctuate on you, and it's an unknown thing. And then when you get into the issue of state funding and federal funding, that's another, you know, issue of concern, because you really don't know. You won't know until May what's going to happen at the state level. You know, there's early indications out there that the state's still having some issues there. As Dr. Harris mentioned, they haven't made their first quarter payment, which is about $2.5 million. The next one's due here in about a week. I don't anticipate any holiday surprises coming from the state, so they'll be probably a good $5 million, you know, at least $5 million down to the school district that we're, you know, we're waiting for. They still do continue to pay general state aid, but the state aid's not coming. So, you know, there is that detrimental piece to it if you don't access the cost of living increase, as it were, that's afforded with the CPI.
Any other questions or comments? Jim?
I'd just like to make a couple. As Dr. Harris moved, you and I sit on the Finance Committee, and every year this topic comes up. I struggle mildly with it for a lot of reasons. Last year, I voted no against this levy, and quite frankly, you know, I'm just opposed to tax policy that allows, you know, a use it or lose it philosophy or a tax to the max philosophy, because at the end of the day, that combination typically burdens the taxpayer. So, I struggle with this mildly, and this increase, if approved, you know, is going to be somewhere around another $3 million. And I guess it's really, for me, is exacerbated by the fact that we've got a lot of unknowns ahead of us as well relative to the referendum, relative to the pensions, and relative to just many unknowns out there. So, I struggle with this topic every year, and tonight's no different before the vote. So, I just want to make that observation or that comment.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts. That's great. If there are no other questions or comments, I will call for a motion to adopt the levy. So moved. Second by Jim. And now I will call for the actual vote. Mrs. Inteher?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
No.
Mr. Koenicker?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes, the motion carries. And now we move on to written reports. We had two written reports for us to look at. One was a FOIA report, the other one was the grant report for 2013, and some of what Mr. Koenicker was talking about earlier on a much larger scale is in this, in terms of the complexity of writing grants and the importance of them to our district. So, that was a very good report, and we appreciate it. Ken?
Just tied to what I said earlier, in addition to that, I know this 16% increase over 2011 is a tremendous increase in the amount of grant monies that we're going to receive. The grant, I didn't see anywhere in that grant in the notification that we got, the total amount of money we receive in grants on a yearly basis. Do we have that number somewhere? Because that was only a change. Is it in the report? And I was so thrilled at 16%, I quit reading.
There's several different grants that went into all of this. So, if you want the total component, we certainly can do that.
So, we could have figured out mathematically with a 16% increase. That's all right, let's move on. We can get that number later, but I'm thrilled with the 16% increase. It's far better than a decrease, and $933,000 plus is a great change. Thanks for all the people that put in time to write the grants. Again, they're not, they're not easy to do. Mr. Koenicker, I can't get this open here. I think it is in there. We'll get that number to you and get it out.
There's no correct total.
Okay, we'll get the total. Okay? There's not a total there. Sorry about that. We will make sure that that gets included, and I will get that information out.
But suffice it to say, it's all money that we need, so it's good that it's increasing. And now we move to our next item, our discussion item, which I really anticipate to be our main order of business this evening. And this is a discussion on the Jefferson facilities development. And just to kind of set the stage for those who are listening at home or in the audience or haven't really kept track of what we're doing here, this is a goal that we set as a board in May. The needs at Jefferson have been on our radar screen for a long time, and in May, we set a goal to look at ways to address those needs. And we typically follow a three-step process when it comes to decision-making. First, we get some presentations and information from staff. Then we do some discussions aboard, and then we do, take some action if it's warranted. Tonight, we're in the discussion phase. We've had many presentations and preliminary discussions. We've had many presentations and preliminary discussions. So tonight, we're in the discussion phase with an anticipation that at our January 9th meeting, we will be taking action of some sort relative to Jefferson. So what we're looking to do tonight is kind of refine our thinking so that we know what the staff is going to be directed to bring to us in January. Having said that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Harris and you can kind of lead us through some additional information that we might need as we go about our discussion.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mrs. Swanson. Yes, we do have a couple of updates this evening that were follow-ups from the special board meeting that we had on November 28th. At that time, we had a lengthy discussion about the building concepts at Jefferson. And one of the direction came from the board was asked us to go back to the Jefferson staff and have further conversation with them about which concept they would prefer and why and bring it back. Because we are prepared to update the board this evening and provide that detailed information. Also, the staff can, now we had that meeting with Jefferson, but we also continued to target the community survey feedback that we received and to focus on making sure that this building is, continues to be program-driven, which is no different than it's ever been. And we want to make sure that we keep that eye on the target and meeting the needs of kids. Also, we want to make sure that we do it in the most cost-effective way. You know, that was another clear message from the community survey is to bring us something that, you know, is going to be our best fiscal choice to be able to meet those needs of the program in that particular facility. And finally, the board also at the last meeting took a look at some projections from PMA and how to pay for the facility and had asked for some additional information. So we are prepared to update that this evening and walk through those funding scenarios. So as Mrs. Swanson had indicated, it will be important to walk through each of these updates and please, this is a discussion, so as we go, please jump in with questions or comments. It'll be very helpful as we move forward. And also clarifying next steps. So staff needs to provide additional information. We'll do that. We certainly need to be prepared to bring a recommendation item forward for the January board meeting if the board so chooses to move forward and put a question on the April ballot. Okay? Any questions about process, where we've been and where we're headed and hopefully what we can get accomplished this evening? Okay. At this time then, I'm going to turn it over to Pastor Brosnan and I'm going to let him just briefly walk through some of the updates with Jefferson. Also, Ms. Farley is the principal at Jefferson and our interim assistant superintendent for student services. She also is going to provide some updated information about the meeting we had at Jefferson. So I'll turn over to Mr. Brosnan for a few minutes.
Good evening and thank you very much. Just a couple of updates to bring the board back to our previous presentation. We have an overall site plan here. We talked about previously as a construction area identified for the proposed building. We identified a way to increase the green space by temporarily locating some play area during construction. At our last meeting, we discussed with the board, we had seven different concepts that we had developed and worked with administration and staff to bring those down to two, presented those two options to the board. And the board had several questions and asked us to meet with staff to determine what is the preferred option. One of the options was, we referred to it as a neighborhood scheme. This was option two. Option one was referred to as a courtyard scheme. And both are very equal as far as square footage, as far as the opportunities that each provide. It's really just different concepts of arrangement, different priorities as we think about space within the building. Both of them developed smaller parking areas. Both of them have a smaller overall footprint. Both provide adequate play outside the building, which has the ability to be shared with the community, with the park. This one in particular is developed around a central courtyard, which provides space for the sensory garden, expanded sensory garden from what's in the building today, as well as a safe interior for the building to provide a lot of outdoor opportunities for children while still providing a high level of safety and security. It still continues to provide places for expansion of the building, which is unique in a courtyard option. And it provides circular circulation through the building, which was seen as a positive. So meeting with staff, we got their input and like Stephanie to help me kind of walk through those ideas and present staff input.
Sure. Thank you, Paul. The staff thought that both options that they looked at really were student-driven and really looking at the feedback from the staff. They unanimously liked the second option, which is the courtyard option. And there's several different reasons why they really gravitated towards that option. The first one is with the courtyard option, they really felt like it gave it a sense of community. And Jefferson, all the team members worked together to meet the needs of students. So the community feel was one of the benefits that they saw in the courtyard option versus the segregated wings that were in the first option that we looked at. Another thing that they liked is the actual sensory garden or courtyard. There was a lot of flexible learning space in that model, whereas in the first one, the space was very limited and it would take a lot to maintain two sensory garden areas or learning instructional areas. They also, for safety and security reasons, liked the second option better because the classrooms weren't leading out to the parking lot. So they really liked that part of it as well. In addition, the furthest class that is away from the gym area was a lot closer in the courtyard concept than it was in the first concept, which a lot of our students are just learning how to walk. So that was a really important factor that our staff was looking at when they were comparing both of the concepts and designs.
I think it was real important to note too, as Mrs. Farley said here, you know, we all attend here when we, Patrick and Paul, as well as Stephanie and Bill and I, and Erica was there as well, attended the meeting with the Jefferson staff. It was an overwhelming support for this option. I mean, there, in fact, it was crystal clear from the beginning that, you know, this was the one that they felt like is the best environment for students in the building and would meet our program needs. So obviously at that point, as Stephanie said, we then chose to focus on that particular site. Mr. Farley and I also had an opportunity the next day to go and visit an additional early childhood center up in Des Plaines, a newly built building. And we're looking at specific things that the staff had mentioned about, you know, looking at classroom size, looking at some of the spaces in the building and how we might be able to be as efficient as possible with that design, keeping that program-driven sense there in the kids. We also were looking at, and had some conversation with staff about, you know, classroom space, classroom size, looking at some of the common areas and how critical they were. And it was, the overall consensus that the concept design was right on target. So by eliminating something, it wasn't the right thing to do by, like, for instance, taking away, you know, the LLC or making the hallways, you know, smaller, things like that. So what we did then is we went back and looked at each room and each space individually and started to have additional conversations about that. And that's where we ended up with a little bit of a revised design here where we, and I'm going to make it crystal clear that, you know, and this is responding to the community survey that said, hey, make sure, you know, build a facility that's going to meet kids' needs, but also, you know, design a facility and support it that is most cost-effective and making sure that it's an appropriate environment, but not overkill and not something that, where we build it too big. So that's what we did. So we started to take a look at this. I'm going to let Paul run, or I'm sorry, Patrick run through and explain. I work with both of them. And Patrick's going to run through and talk about some of the thinking that when we started to really fine-tune the concept here and making some decisions about some of these spaces. Patrick?
Thank you. So the challenge was to work with staff in all of the areas within the building and think about what spaces potentially in the original program could be reconsidered and maybe brought down to scale or reduced a little bit. One of the things that came to mind when we worked with the staff members and talked through the building program was the classroom. We felt if we could modify the classroom itself, that would have the biggest impact. One of the concerns obviously was the concept of a program-driven building. That's where a majority of the programs happen. So we had to be careful with that and how we utilize it. One of the unique things in this building we talked about before was the development of collaborative team rooms. So staff has a place, not unlike a constituency in a middle school or a high school where away from the classroom, the specialists and instructors can get together and talk about issues, talk about students and be able to work as a team to improve the next day and improve learning for those specific students that they have. One of the benefits of having a space like that beyond all the things that collaboration can lead for students is the main workstation for the teacher naturally is an outside of the classroom. That oftentimes, if you think about a workstation in an office complex, might be a 10 by 10. That's 100 square feet. Most teachers don't get that much space. They're working maybe within a 5 by 10 area or maybe a 9 by 9 area. So we looked then within the classroom area and made the recommendation to reduce each of the classroom areas by that 50 square feet, which is in the team collaborative areas. The teachers still need a place to plug in and work. We're thinking kind of a podium, almost like this podium would work really well in a classroom to allow the maximum space that's available to be used for learning and as opposed to a workstation. So that was a significant change. Beyond that, the, some of the areas, I'm not going to go through all of them, but just to give you a sense of the things that we were studying, made a slight change in the size of the OTPT room, looking at the layout. We also looked at, the indoor play area or the large motor skills room, which is really a thing about a multipurpose room. We reduced a little bit of storage adjacent to that. We also looked at the student service area or the principal's office and looked at the configuration of some of the spaces and felt that we could reduce that by a couple hundred square feet. And not unlike a lot of the elementary schools, we create kind of a, the reception area is the workspace for some of the support staff. And so by eliminating a couple of walls, we can save some square footage and we're able to do the same thing here with this revised option. We looked at the records and storage room and found some ways to reduce some of that storage, square footage as well. We also looked at the overall, the public toilet from the earlier scheme, there was portions of the building that were intended to be much more public. And in order to make sure that people were not entering a building to use facilities, we had to additional public toilets that in this current option, in the courtyard solution, we're able to reduce the number of area available for public toilets, as well as we've gone back through and reconsidered some of the mechanical spaces. Doesn't sound like a lot when you think about individual spaces, but all that square footage does start to add up. We impacted about 48 spaces. And that sounds, again, sounds like a lot, but it's kind of done in a way that we feel has no impact on the program, but does make a big difference because each of those changes adds up to about 3,700 square feet. And that helps the bottom line on the overall project. We then met again with the lend lease, the district's construction manager, talked a little bit about what do we anticipate construction to look like. Again, this project right now is anticipated with a successful board vote and referendum, a lot of things that are ahead, bidding in the spring of 2014. So it's kind of a long look ahead, but the team feels very confident that the base cost per square foot is appropriate. The square footage then moves from about, just almost 63,000 square feet down to just over 59,000 square feet. And the total cost goes from about $18,000 or 18.3 million to just under 17.6 million. So again, significant change, but we feel done with a input from staff and done in such a way that the program will have minimal impact and we feel very confident with the changes that we've made, it will still be a very successful building for staff and for early learners. Next was a, really a look out to other facilities. We talked before, this is a difficult building type to simply, to call up another district or to walk through another building and say, how do we compare in size? So this early childhood center comparison chart looks to several facilities that are in the area that have been either built new in the last, I think it's almost 10 to 15 years on some of these facilities and looks at the number of available learning spaces in each of the facilities relative to the gross area of the building. And so we see the name of the building. There are several of these are ones that we've talked about in several presentations, committee meetings, staff meetings. I think to it, from our committee, with the exception of one of those facilities, members at a committee have toured each one of those facilities to get a sense of the interior, interviewed staff, met with the, either the principal of each of the buildings or a user, in some cases even the architect of the facility, to get a sense of what are the lessons learned, what works really well, what do you feel is missing from your facility? Kind of, if you could do it all over again, what would you do differently? And that feedback has really led to the development of program we have. So I'm not going to go through all of them, but you can see there's several facilities comparative, looking at the classrooms available. And for this study, it was really looking at, not necessarily every room is being used for direct instruction, but how many spaces are the size, appropriate size for a classroom? And then looking at the size of those rooms, we felt that was going to be important to the board, especially with the modification that we made of the, of the square, of the square footage for individual classrooms. So we're seeing rooms that, a number of rooms are available teaching spaces, range, probably the smallest one, it's up there is 13, which is the existing Jefferson. And again, from our earlier discussion, there's 12 rooms that are being utilized today for direct instruction, but if you look at the plan, there's really one more space that's being used for, for testing and for diagnostics. But if anybody else walked through the building, they would say, eh, it looks like a regular classroom. So we're counting that in to be able to be a fair comparison to the others. So smallest being 13, largest is 22. The size of the classrooms range from on the low side, 850, up to 1125 square feet for a building we toured in New Lenox. The total square footage of those buildings then varies as well, but the number is important to the, is how do they compare? And we're seeing the range from on the low end of just over 2,000 square feet, you know, there's 2,000 gross square feet of building per classroom. And then all the way down to, or up to about 3,188 square feet. The current option for the new Jefferson is in at 2,900 square feet. The current Jefferson for comparison is just over 2,000 square feet. So it gives you a sense, as you look at it with the modifications, it's not the largest that's out there, it's not the smallest that's out there, but in, through the process that we followed, as we've learned from each of the facilities that are out there that we've toured, we've responded to those things. And so naturally, it's probably going to be a little bit bigger in this type of comparison, but we also believe it'll function better and last longer because of those things that we've learned through that, through that effort. And so this is really for comparison, to help the community understand, is it, how does it fit the program? How does it fit the expectation for the, for the community overall? Overall updates, these are same as we talked about previously. It's important to remember there's a process for construction and demolition and then occupancy. So we're looking at occupancy here with a successful vote and support through the community. Accompancy as early as August of 2015. So we'll end there with any questions from the board?
Just want to point out a couple of things to board. Remember, some of the information here has been revised. Obviously, Patrick pointed that out. And then that one chart's a new chart. Now, it isn't necessarily new to the Jefferson core team. We did look at a lot of those, but we definitely put it together in a simple slide here to be able to, you know, show some comparisons with other districts, like districts. And most of these buildings are all relatively new, when I say that, in the last 10 years. Most of them the last five. So we are looking at like facilities and the most challenging part of the early childhood is, is not all the programs in all of these buildings in these districts are the same. You know, we have our own program. We have a program that's been highly successful for our kids. So therefore, we need to take all that into account. So it's not just a typical cookie cutter scenario, but it does show some range there and some comparisons on that particular chart. and some comparisons on that particular chart. So certainly want to open up for questions, comments, discussion, clarity, things like that from board members.
Patrick, thank you for sharpening the pencil. I think, you know, we always start out with the ideal and then we, you know, try to get more real, but I'm a little bit, and I want to make sure I hear this correctly, you know, when you said you went to different districts and you said you asked people questions, what did you like, what would you have done differently? I'm presuming that the people who are at 950 square feet in a classroom didn't say, I would have made this classroom just a little bit bigger. I just don't want to skip and have, you know, and say, gee, I wish we would have.
I think the, what we did learn about the, some of the buildings that had 900 square feet, they were really looking for, we talked about what would you do differently? One of the buildings in particular I'm thinking about, we looked at Broca Early Learning Center. There's a lot of discussion about having spaces available for therapy. And when we look at, Anne Reid was a good example, in some of the rooms, there was space outside of the classroom but directly adjacent that were available for therapy. And that's kind of the model that we're looking at, is making sure that every classroom is really expandable through that therapy space. And that's a way of expanding a room when needed and then the room kind of shrinks back down to its, to the 950 square feet. So in a lot of ways, these rooms are all expandable to almost 1,100 square feet because of those adjacent therapy spaces. And it's not necessarily those spaces, it's where they're placed in the design and how they'll be expandable into the classroom that creates that level of flexibility. Because ideally, each of the facilities went through as well as staff, they would like to make sure that students receiving additional assistance, it happens in the primary learning space where all the other students are at. So that was a big issue with the staff that had the smaller classrooms. The other one was the having places for the teacher's desk. So again, a couple of examples, Anne Reid was another good example, where there was a office area outside of the classroom. And so that allows for kind of the stuff, the file cabinets, the things that are necessary for the teacher to be able to do their job, but aren't needed regularly during the day for instruction. And that's really the collaborative spaces that, again, outside the classroom in a proposed design, allow for that to happen away from the learning space and that square footage that's really precious for learning can be dedicated solely for that.
One of the things that Mr. Farley and I saw when we went to displaying, the most recent building we went and looked at, is focusing on that exact issue. Those classrooms in that particular building did not have teacher desks in them. The teacher's, you know, space, workspace area, like in a typical classroom in an elementary building, you'd take something, you know, quite a bit of space. The room was entirely student space in the classroom. And so that was kind of an aha moment when we were looking specifically at that and noticed that that's why we feel very comfortable. We're not taking away student learning space, we're taking away teacher space and putting it, and having it located in a different position. So a place in the building, in a more collaborative environment, a shared space, you know, with other educators, with the therapists and so on, which is a better environment anyway for those spaces. So, and then we maximize the classroom space, you know, in each classroom for student learning, especially at the early childhood level with stations and different activities going on. So it has been very important. And I don't know, Stephanie, if you would do want to comment any further on that? I don't know if I captured it completely.
You absolutely did. I think that when we were first looking at it, because of the space constraints at Jefferson, not only did we have a teacher desk in there, but we also had a related service staff member. So you had two desks in classrooms. So when we were first looking at space, we were really concerned about it. We really like the model that they've come up with because we do do a lot of teaming and we have professional learning communities. And truly, that is the reason why I think that students make such great progress is because the adults are working together and teaming together and this concept brings both of those about.
Yeah, Patrick, one of the goals that we had on the Jefferson Core Team was to come up with a conceptual design for a structure where maybe in 10 years, it would no longer be an early childhood, early learning center, but maybe an elementary school. How many of these other comparative buildings that you looked at were designed with that flexibility in mind?
There is, there's at least one of those that was set up that way. We're looking, we walked through, what are the spaces that would be shorted or would need to be modified? If you took an early learning center and said, okay, today needs to be an elementary school. And primarily, the one space we looked at was the gymnasium in each of those buildings. And that was why we were really hesitant when we looked at the large motor room to that would become the gymnasium, to make sure we don't short that. The second area is storage and then the third would really be place for a multipurpose room. The current program, current design does not provide a place for a multipurpose room. In other words, a place to have simultaneous PE activities and serve lunch. So with that exception, we feel very comfortable that this building could be utilized as an elementary school. In fact, it would serve very well as an elementary school because of the layout and because of the size of the rooms and some of the other things the building offers. If I wanted to go down that road and really do a good job of making sure it could convert well, I would probably look at the size of the gymnasium. But we feel confident, especially with the buildings the district has, that it's just under 3,000 square feet for the PE space, that would suffice for elementary.
Perhaps I wasn't clear. Were any of the other facilities that you evaluated, designed with the purpose that they could be changed into an elementary school if needs changed?
The Spencer Trail Elementary, Spencer Trail Early Learning Center was, that was one we got feedback on that that was envisioned, that it would become an elementary school if need be. In fact, that building's probably become more of an early learning center than it was initially intended to be. The other ones, we didn't get that specific type of feedback, but having walked the buildings down, there's at least one other that I feel confident could be utilized as an elementary school with that same caveat. They each have one large multipurpose space. So if you utilize that for PE, then you're short space for multipurpose or vice versa. So really depending on the population of the building, because we talked about 20 learning spaces, that can be, that's a significant number of elementary students, you would have to have a separate cafeteria. So with that same caveat, I would say three of their have that potential to be utilized as elementary schools. So we're not just looking at the size of the room, we're looking at with the hallways, we're looking at the entry sequence and the places for storage, because now we start to, the kids bring a lot more stuff with them and it needs to be additional places for storage.
Yeah, I would concur with Patrick. You know, I visited him as well and there was three or four of them there that were designed not to be an elementary building and were specifically targeted and were designed for the purpose of early childhood. And so, and that's what you see when we went out and started looking at other places and what they're doing. You know, again, you know, we believe, you know, the right thing to do is build it flexible enough to give a board and staff 20 years down the road, we might be using it for something different. And so that is a consideration, because a couple of these spots were built and designed only for early childhood. And so, and there is some differences there that go into that, but we believe we can build it, you know, flexible enough to be able to handle.
Are there other questions about the design or not? I guess I'd kind of like to just go around the table and get a sense of how comfortable everybody's feeling with this most recent design. And I assume Dr. Harris, this is what you're recommending to us?
It will be. Unless there's any significant concerns from the board, this would be, as final as it is, we certainly can continue to tweak or adjust based on the wishes of the board. But I do feel very confident after months of looking at this, this is a program-driven building that will meet our needs for many years to come in District 200.
All right. So can we just sort of start developing some consensus here is I guess what I'm looking for? So maybe Barb, you want to lead off?
Well, I think, you know, thank you for all the work you've put into this. I know it's been phenomenal and Stephanie, please thank the staff. I know that they're very interested in having a good place to provide some really strong services to their students. That's what Jefferson is about and appreciate that. I appreciate also the staff is willing to sharpen, you know, sharpen their eyes so that we could make sure that we recommend a solution that is, instead of the, what I would do if money were no object, it's of what we should do that's fiscally responsible. So, and I know there's that tendency to go that way, especially when you're dealing with those children. So that's, that's really good and I appreciate that. I think if you're looking for my recommendation, it would be to go ahead and ask the community if they feel as though this is something we ought to be doing at this point in time. In my view, a referendum is the ultimate form of democracy. We're saying we've reviewed the needs, we feel this is something that would benefit the community. If you agree with this, vote yes. If you don't, you're certainly welcome to vote no. And, and you know, there are many decisions that you make as an administrator, there are many, you know, you have a certain dollar limit, you know, other than that, then you have to, you know, bucket up to the boss and he has to buck things up to us. That's just how, you know, business works and it's how school districts work. And this is the type of thing that we bucket up to the community at large. And so I think it's appropriate that we, that we ask and see what they think and if they want to go along with it. You know, it's still another two years out. I think delay it and delay it, you know, it just becomes later and later that we're dealing with a facility that, that isn't suitable for our most vulnerable population. I don't think our need for preschool is going to go away. I don't think it's a luxury and I think it is our obligation to serve the people who have those special needs. I think, you know, we're bound by law to do that and the laws changed. That's why we didn't have preschools and we didn't have air conditioning in schools, you know, 20 years ago and 30 years ago when some of us went to school, even longer ago. But, you know, the needs have changed and our building needs to meet the programming of today and into the foreseeable future and I think this will do it.
So yes, yes to this building's design and yes to putting a question to the voters in the proper. Yes?
Yeah, with respect to the building design, the courtyard design was my favorite from way back in November, but I purposely didn't share that view after the last meeting with the staff or the architects. I wanted them to make their own decision on it, so it's completely fortuitous that this happened, but I'm delighted. So I do favor the courtyard design. And for the reasons Barb summarized in her presentation, I'm certainly in favor of going ahead with referendum, letting the community decide whether we should have a new Jefferson. I think it's our fiduciary obligation as board members to advance this idea of having a new Jefferson. When I ran for the board a year and a half ago, as soon as I walked into the old Jefferson, I knew that something had to change. It was that Tom Cruise movie, you had me at Kaua or I had to leave by. They had me at the time I walked in that building. So obviously, I favor building a new Jefferson, but the ultimate decision is not mine, it's not ours, it's the community. But we owe it to those children that will be attending Jefferson, we owe it to the parents of those children, we owe it to the community to put that choice to the community and not delay it anymore. And even though we have a number of unknowns coming up next year, pension obligations and funding from the state and funding from the federal government and all of that, we can always find an excuse to delay it. But I think the time for excuses for delaying it over, I think we need to pursue.
I agree. Yeah, we can always find a reason to wait. We had the same, some same people that will say, wait now, said wait with the high schools, said wait with Hallow's, said wait with the elementary. So you're never going to get away from that. So like you've already alluded to, let the community decide. This is clearly not extravagant. It's not a Taj Mahal. It's inappropriate. It's what we need to do. And what we've been talking about year after year after year, it's time to finally do it. Bring it up to the community, let them figure it out, let them decide. So yeah, the courtyard design is what I prefer. Glad to see you went back and sharpened your pencils. Some people will say shave another five square foot off here, another 10 square foot off here. You're never going to make everybody happy, but this is data-driven. This is design-driven for the kids that it's supposed to serve. We should want better for future generations than we had and this will get us further down that path than we certainly are right now. So yes and yes, courtyard and do it now.
Ken?
I'm in favor of the design. That was my favorite design from the beginning as well. I didn't like the open-ended courtyard with a fence at the end. I think this self-contained sensory garden approach is a lot better approach to an outdoor space that the children are really self-contained and can get into easily and exit easily as well. One of the things that strikes my mind about going for a referendum, especially for preschool, is that you can, you can talk to many parents of children who have had special needs in our preschool and have continued on into our, into our regular ed facilities. And our preschool saves us money actually by working with these children at an early age. And we're mandated to do it, but if we can include more of those children and make this facility that can handle more, not just the 289 that we're able to take now, but we can include more children who would come into our community and need the services that we offer further down the road. They come out of our preschool and I've had more than one person tell me that the years they spent at Jefferson and the programs that are offered to our communities, to our community and parents, have in the long run saved us a lot of money in the district for not having specialists further along for the remaining 12 years of their education. So although we hear all the time, you know, let's put the referendum off and this is a bad time for a referendum, I don't think there's any ever a good time for a referendum when they're hearing good times, bad times. People just don't want to raise taxes and spend money and we all pay taxes in the community and I don't want my tax bill to go up, but I live here, I feel as though I can afford to live here. If I can't afford to live here, then maybe I should move. And I think that that's, I think that's all, a big, big part of this thing is, yeah, I don't like to raise taxes, but I am, I am in favor of putting this to the community, letting them decide. And those people who, who for one reason or another, and they'll be out there all the time, are not aware of the mandate that we have to provide the education for these children, what the ratio means, the two-thirds, the one-third, so that they have a like education opportunity, have really got to understand more what early childhood is all about. And I think that's a really important part of this whole referendum process. So I do support the model design and so on. I would, I would really want to make sure we have enough storage space. If you've ever looked at the things that are crammed into some of those rooms and the equipment, the adaptive PE equipment, the adaptive equipment that these special needs children have to have and they have at school and we have to provide for them, it's a lot of space. And I don't want the education of these children and the development of these children sidelined because they've got to wait until we have to get a piece of adaptive equipment over from a storage place. So I would be concerned about having the right amount of storage for that equipment. This is not an elementary building that we're designing. Could it be used as that in the future potentially? We're designing a special facility for special kids and it really has to be thought of that way. So I'm very, very supportive of putting this out to the community. I was supportive of even the higher number and felt that that too would be able to pass. But if the staff agrees to this kind of design and the needs can be handled in this facility designed this way and we are able to save some money, then we go with the, with the current plan and the current pricing structure and the referendum question that I will be glad to support January 9th.
Patrick, could you address the storage issue? I know that was one of the topics we heard and it's a good point, Ken. When we went around and did the tour, and Jim, I know you were on some of those tours and Joanne, who's not here right now, also visited several of the schools, but that was definitely a lesson learned. And I heard that at several places we went was about the storage. Can you address that, you know, and our thinking as we put this design concept together?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. I think it was one of the things we heard in each of the buildings was that there was a lack of adequate storage. In the building plan, in the program, as you go through, you're going to see the, each of the areas, each specific space has dedicated storage for certain types of equipment. We did make some minor adjustments where we thought we could. Other places we, we studied it and really came up with a decision that we really couldn't change the storage that's dedicated for some of those spaces because we felt that we would be short-changed in the future. And the specific concern, especially in the large motor area, is the types of devices that we're using today, oftentimes it'll change by the population, change by the students that are there, a number of equipment, number of pieces, the types of equipment that are needed and then, and then the following year again. So some of that equipment can be stored a little bit away. We do have a mezzanine area that we're identifying, but majority has to be down and available. One of the things we talked about in our committee meeting was the changing need for large motor space. And one of the discussions was, does it all need to happen in a large room like this, in a gymnasium type of space? And the reality was that no, it doesn't. Large motor activities can happen in a lot of other places. Certainly it can happen in a hallway. And we did see buildings that had undersized the multi-purpose spaces and were forced to use the hallways, but the hallways weren't designed for that. They didn't have storage areas adjacent to the hallway for some of the equipment. So we have identified spaces throughout the building for that equipment. We believe at this point it's adequate. We will, as we go into further levels of design, be verifying that as we go forward. And I also want to point out that there are just two types of contingency that's in the project right now. And a portion of that is what we call design contingency and it's for those changes, the fine tuning of, of the building, the spaces. And that fine tuning can go down and up in either direction. And then there's also contingency available for, for the bidding and construction aspect of the project. So what are the changes that are going to happen in the economy from today to bid day? And then during construction, what's going to happen, are there dollars available for changes? There, we feel that they're, they're tight contingencies at this point, but we feel they're appropriate. And that's really where some of that fine tuning can, can happen as we go through the design. So even though you have seen some modifications of specific storage areas, we feel with the office area under student services, we reduced that size a little bit with the idea of, although electronic records are not completely being utilized today, as was pointed out, this building won't be available for two years. And so the feeling is that we hit record storage rooms or space, we do step with the understanding that we'll be able to, two years from now, there'll be more of that material will be electronic. And so we feel very confident that we can have a successful building with adequate storage with this design.
Thank you. I think that the detail on some of that, you know, storage and that going to the engineering phase, if it is approved and we move forward, so that's where those concepts will play out.
Well done. Okay, that is yes and yes. Jim?
I've got ample information that I can review and digest and everyone's comments here, so I'll, at this point in time, try to study and do my due diligence between now and January 9th at this point. Other than that, really no comment.
I've got, I've got to push back on you a little bit there. I need a clue as to where your, where your thinking is here. Can you give us an idea in terms of the building itself? What is your thinking on this?
Well, if I were to support the building, I agree, I like the courtyard style. I think that's an effective, based on what we've heard from staff and, and I like the layout, much like Jim mentioned earlier. So if there was a building to be built, yeah, that would be my choice relative to the footprint and the services to be provided in that environment. Yeah.
And then initially, where are you thinking in terms of the referendum, asking voters?
That's a tough question for me. I have a different view of this opportunity and mine is more one on the financial side. Is that the button? Not going. Maybe it does. Is that better? Yeah. So, you know, we've now got some different numbers, not significantly different numbers, but again, I, I view this decision for me and for constituents that put me at this table to look at all aspects and try and find that balance. And I really can't speak to that right now. I guess I have to digest it and really take a look at it. You know, as I, as I view the numbers today, it's adding, you know, $27 million in principal and interest onto a current debt structure that runs our debt structure up to $270 million. And that's an important number to me to take a look at. So I can't really comment on how the 9th is going to roll out for me, but those are elements that I'm looking at. But to answer your question, the footprint is the courtyard. I like that a lot. And as it relates to supporting the referendum or not, I really have to take a hard look at the data that's now been provided, which I appreciate everybody's hard work. Thank you.
Well, I'll let you know where I'm thinking on this. Building, like everyone, many people here have expressed, the courtyard always seemed like the right choice to me for just practical reasons. It just seems better to be able to make a circuit than to go up and down hallways. And so that I think is a great thing. In terms of the actual layout of the building or square footage of the building, like Ken, I guess I would want to just defer that to staff and make sure that whatever we're putting there is what the program needs as opposed to trying to, you know, just cut a little bit here, a little bit there, just for the sake of cutting, you know, a few feet off. But I do appreciate the fact that we have been responsive to one of the things that we learned from the community survey, which is that they do want the, the most efficient initial cost possible. And so I, I do appreciate all the work that Leggett has done on this from the beginning, being with us at the forums and being responsive there to the community's desire to have a footprint that allowed for some more green space and some common use of space with the community. So we, the design has shifted to respond to that and it's responded to the staff needs, I believe, and also now also responding to the cost element of it. So thank you for all of that work. As I look at going forward with this project, it seems to me that one of the things we learned from the EQURA survey is that the point of that survey was to find out what the community values. And clearly the community values the excellence of our programs. They value anything that directly impacts students. They made that clear. We took the administrative portion off. They value student experience. And we know just from all that we've seen in our community, that our community has a heart for helping people who need some additional support and help. And certainly the program at Jefferson, that is at our earliest, most fragile and vulnerable learners. And I'm sure that the community's heart is right there to help those people. So looking at all of that, it seems to me this is just a natural fit in that if the community understands how this building really helps those children if it's constructed correctly in terms of the program, that the community would have no problem supporting that as they support so many things so generously in all other aspects of, of their daily lives and, and contributions that they make. So I definitely would go forward with the building as we've had it presented tonight, assuming there's not any little tweaking that the staff wants to do. And then I say, you know, we need to move forward. Yes to all of the unknowns that are happening. You know, if we waited for the federal government and the state government to come out of gridlock, we'd be sitting in our living rooms not doing anything. I, at some point, you have to, you have to move forward, you have to take a step of faith and hope and, and we have deadlines as to when we need to make the decision and by the time the voters, as you point out, the, the community actually will make the final decision. And so by the time they come to make the decision, perhaps things will be clarified in terms of the economy. And we can all hope it will be a much better, rosier picture then. So I say move forward and see what the voters have to say. And as I say, I do believe that their hearts are with this type of thing and they just need to understand what the importance of it is. And Joanne, I walked in late and, you know, Joanne, I didn't share your news to everyone, but yeah.
I'm a grandma. Yeah, very exciting. He's absolutely beautiful. And, you know, I reviewed the plans that were proposed and I loved the enclosed space and, you know, if they, did you discuss reducing it and that's still the best option? Saved a little money there?
We cut approximately 3,000 feet off the original footprint and basically consolidated some spaces, which is in the PowerPoint there and certainly can follow up with you afterwards and share it with you detail-wise. We talked about why and details behind it, but essentially it's the same concept. We just shrunk certain spaces up a little bit and moved the number from 18.3 to 17.6 by reducing 3,000 square feet. And it's across the building, not eliminating anything in particular, but it was situational.
Okay, that sounds good. You know, like I think I said last time, just as long as we're thinking future, expand, you know, number of kids and needs, we should be good.
After hearing everybody's comment, a couple of things came to mind. First of all, I did neglect to mention that the courtyard was my first choice as well. So I apologize for that fact. Andy and I were sitting next to each other and we're going courtyard, courtyard in the last meeting. So maybe we had a good sense of what the staff looked like, I don't know. Anyway, the other thing I wanted to say is, you know, we've discussed two financial kind of things and this is more to your point, Jim, you know, tonight. You know, we discussed the levy, which in the levy, we are, we are asking the community for money. In, in this situation, we're not asking the community for money, we're asking the community if they want to give us money. By putting this referendum on the ballot, we're saying, is this of value to you so that you want to raise your own taxes? We're not just raising them, we're asking them if, according to their community values, they want to do this. So I, I understand where you're coming from and I understand that, you know, you have an issue with the debt structure and all of that, but quite frankly, if the community is comfortable with that debt structure and, and if the community is comfortable with those increased taxes, this is a decision that rightfully belongs to them. And that's why the law has stated that we must go for referendum. So I, I just wanted to, I don't know if I helped your comfort level at all, but, but that's why this is not as difficult a decision for me, you know, as a levy would be, because here we're saying, you know, we know these needs have been identified, that's clear, it's out there, we've been talking about it for years. Construction is never going to be as cheap as it is today. You know, with, with a better economy, you know, you can increase costs of steel and brick and whatever else you do. We sharpen the pencil. We're going to say, you know what, do you want, do you want us to do this? We're, we're putting it up to them. We're putting our, our faith essentially, you know, Jefferson's faith in their hands. And so it's a very different question than, than it is to say yes to a levy or to say, you know, yes to spending money on, on something, you know, that you think is, is, you know, maybe not as necessary. So I, I just wanted to kind of clarify that for the community as a whole. A lot of people say a referendum is a foregone conclusion. Well, no, there are many communities that have referendums go down to defeat all the time. We hope that doesn't happen, but if the community wants this, then the community should, should have it. And this is their chance to say, yes, I want it and I'm willing to pay for it or why not. So it's, that's how I view it and I think I want to give you some proof of thought.
Any further discussion on that topic or, I see Ken?
No, not that topic, but I failed to say that I think we ought to go for lead certification on this building as well for the efficiencies of the environment and cost savings, again, cost savings once we get the building up and running. So that I failed to, I had that in my notes and saw it as I was reviewing and so on. And Patrick didn't mention any of that tonight, he did at the previous meeting on the 30th, but I think we should go for that. And I know it adds, it costs a little bit more in order to do that, but I think it's important that we use materials that are environmentally sound and that are closer to home and we do a lot to aid the environment. I think we got everything we can. We have in the course of our last building and I think we should move in the direction of, of that for this facility as well.
Thank you. Seems to me we also, so we've got a pretty good feel of where everybody is on that, but we have one other major thing that you need to know as a staff and, and that is the funding structure. Because we have had a couple, a few different scenarios presented to us and so in order to write a referendum question, you need to know what that is. That's another thing the community gets to know when they, when they vote.
Thank you, Mrs. Swanson. Correct. The second piece of this, which we previewed at the last meeting, special meeting, and tonight, we brought back some revised options and projections. Obviously we took the new cost, which is 17.6 million and Bob Lewis from PMA is here and you do have a copy of the updated information in front of you. And at the last meeting, we talked about, there's always that question between the balance between paying principal and interest, how you structure that over time. If, you know, we put this forward, community members want to know, you know, how are we paying for it and how long, you know, does it extend our debt structure? I mean, all these questions. We have four different scenarios here. I'm going to let Bob walk through those with you. And again, they're not much different than what we saw before, it just shows you different ways and how we would structure the debt. So I'm going to turn it over to Bob and let him walk through it and we certainly need direction on this as well this evening.
Well, thank you, Jim, for having me back tonight to speak to you about this important topic. And I just want to clarify a little bit, when you ask the voters to vote for a bond issue, you're simply asking them to approve an issuance of bonds up to a maximum amount and for the authority to levy a tax. The specific structure is not on that ballot. The structure is given out as information on how you intend to structure the bonds, but that is not voted upon. Ultimately, the board passes resolutions after that when the bonds are sold that will determine the ultimate structure. Now, more times than not, all the time, the structure that's discussed in the referendum campaign is what's sold, there's tinkering with it, much like you have with the architectural plans, like for instance, the plans you see tonight, we structured the most conservative way from a, at least in my opinion, from a debt service standpoint, in that we assume an issuance two, approximately two months after the referendum is approved for the full amount. Well, as I mentioned the last presentation, what we look at doing is making recommendations at that time of when your construction draws are, what the current interest rate environment is. Are there advantages to breaking issuance up into two series to take advantage of certain provisions under the tax code to get a lower interest rate? We call it bank qualification, which provides an additional incentive to banks to buy your bonds at a lower interest rate, which can be as much as a half of a percent lower interest rate. So we haven't even assumed that in this analysis. So those are types of things that can lower the costs. So the most important thing tonight as we go through these scenarios is realize that although you're going to discuss them and the merits of each one, because there's advantages and disadvantages to each, ultimately the board will make those sales at a later date pursuant to specific bond resolutions.
You know, and if I jump in here, Bob's absolutely right in how this, and I know the board members are familiar with that. The one thing when we go out though, if the board chooses, they want to know how much it costs me, what's it going to cost me? So that's why it is important to have a target here, you know, what, how much money am I going to have to pay additionally per year? So that's, that's really more of an educating the community type thing and I know most board members know that. So, go ahead.
So the, in the last meeting, we looked at various sizes for the bond issue and the board narrowed down the size based upon the project. We've since narrowed that down to reflect the current architectural plans. Now that we've chosen a size, it's time to look at some scenarios and how you can amortize that. So what we do, what we begin with was the, called the baseline scenario that you saw when I was out here last time. And that was to take the 17.6 million and amortize it after the repayment of the existing bond. And that was to take the 17.6 million and amortize it after the repayment of the existing bonds. I think it's easier to see on the graph. Where the blue is the existing debt service payments for the outstanding bonds of the district. And debt service is the principal and the interest payments that are due. And those bonds retire or mature in fiscal year 2023. And then, so you see the two red bars that occur after that, which represent the principal payments for the proposed new issuance. And so what we do is we'll go through all four scenarios, I'll describe what they're doing. And then when we get to the end, there'll be a summary of the costs of each payment, annual payment by the taxpayer versus the total debt service that you pay for each scenario. Option two. For the way it's described is we amortize some principal over the years. So wait until amortize any principal to the end. We start amortizing principal annually. And then there's a larger payment at the end in fiscal year 23. So that you have a larger increase to the taxpayer annually as a result of this plan. You can see, oops, wrong button. Lights there, how we leveled it off in those years, so it doesn't go any higher. And then you have the spike here, so this will be an interest only payment. And then you have the balance of the principal maturing in that year. The third scenario is the leveled debt service structure. What I level, we mean you have the same payment annually, so it's more akin to a home mortgage payment or a car payment. But as I mentioned the last board meeting, the typically you look at a district or any issuer's debt in the aggregate. You just don't look at one bond issue by itself. You try to look at the impact of all of them together. We try to make analogies to individual homeowners' experience, but most homeowners don't have nine cars or nine houses with different payments. Whereas you have nine or so bond issues that you have to look at in the aggregate. But this kind of isolates it, this bond issue by itself by having the same annual payment. That payment would be about $1.9 million a year. And what you'll see when we get to the end of the scenarios is that will have the lowest payback, which should make sense because you're paying back more principal sooner. But it's going to have a larger impact to the taxpayer. You can see in those years, the spikes above the current debt service is higher than any of the prior scenarios. Lastly, we have scenario four, which is more akin to scenario one. There is no principal payment until the final year. So the benefit of this scenario is that it does not extend the current term of your debt. It still pays off in the same year, 2013. I would say a possible drawback of this scenario, which I'll discuss now because it's not as, you can't observe it as easily on the summary page. So you notice the amount of that payment exceeds the $20 million amount in that year. And one of the things we talked about the last meeting is that perhaps the board may, down the road, when the impact of the hubbo restructure, remember the hubbo restructuring impacted all these years. So taxpayers are getting tax relief in those years as a result of having gone through the hubbo refunding and payoff. Well, when that starts to dissipate, you have those increases in your debt service. Well, if you choose to lower that at some point, you would have to perhaps peel some of this off and move that out at that time as opposed to setting it up that way right now. So here's the summary. Scenario one, you borrow 17.6 million or you obtain that bunch in proceeds. And you'd pay back 24.7 million roughly, so that would equate to about $7 million in interest cost at current market rates plus an additional 25 basis points without getting that benefit I was talking about earlier about the bank qualification. The impact to taxpayers roughly the same as before, went down cyclically, ranging from $15 to $39, whether you have a $200,000 home up to a $500,000 home. The second scenario where you amortize some principal annually does shave off about 1.3 million in interest costs over the life of the bond issue. Does have an impact to the taxpayer, but it's a moderate increase over the first scenario of depending on which value of home you have, about $4 to $12 per year. The third scenario where we did the leveled debt service, that's a scenario that's more like a car payment or mortgage payment. That has the lowest interest payback, about $3.2 million. But it comes at the cost of a larger annual impact to the taxpayer and ranging from $38 to $100. So it's almost double the original scenario, or it's more than double the original scenario. And then lastly, scenario four, which is really just a modification of scenario one. Other than, and the benefit of again is that you're not extending the term at all. You get to a $24.2 million of debt service, which is about $500,000 less than scenario one. And the impact to the taxpayer, since it's really, it's occurring in the rounding amount, comes out to about the same as scenario one. If you extended those to decimal places, you would see a difference, but that's why there is, the payment is the same. It's not that much of a difference in the tax rate. You can see the scenario one is .025, scenario four is .024. I would point out that the impact of the hubbo restructuring refinance payoff, if you recall, I believe is about $50 a year to a person with a $300,000 home. So scenarios one, two, and three, even after issuing the new bonds, it would be lower than it would have been had you not done that. Or even, you don't absorb the full savings from having done the hubbo payoff and refunding. Whereas with scenario three, you actually exceed the benefits from having done the hubbo refinance. So those are the pros and cons that you need to weigh as you discuss each of these scenarios. And at this time, I'll take any questions that you have on them.
Thank you so much and thank you for chasing all of these numbers around and all the different scenarios.
Sure.
Appreciate it. Are there questions from board members?
I'm just curious, when you present these types of scenarios to other districts for other issues, which way do they tend to go? 60, 40 of them choose scenario four types or ones? Or what do you see people doing out there?
It really varies by district. I think of Barrington a few years ago, they did their football stadium renovation for about $5 million. And we showed them these scenarios. They ended up choosing the leveled debt service. I live in a Swigle School district, who've done a lot of the more scenario ones where the debt service is paid off. The, it ultimately depends on what's important to this community for balancing those things out. I think at this time, there's always a cost to deferring the principal. You're always going to pay more interest. But at this time, with interest rates as low as they are, that cost to deferring after debt has been paid off is lower than it has been historically. That's one of the mitigating factors here. But I can tell you exactly what, I can't give you a certain percentage of half of them would do this, half of them do that. It just, it depends on the message they want to give to the voters, what they think the voters will approve. You know, in some cases, the voters would be more receptive to doing a scenario three because they want to keep the interest costs as low as possible, even if they have to pay a little bit more. And there's other districts that, you know, they really need to watch how we're impacting the tax bills today. And they have the theory that we want to look at all our debt in the aggregate and make sure that, you know, all taxpayers who benefit from this project pay their fair share over the years, not just the early taxpayers.
And a related question, I made to Joanne. When you're selling houses in your real estate, we haven't talked about this, so if you want to think about this, go right ahead and answer later. When you're selling houses and the mortgage people are talking to the people about how much they can afford, are they interested in how much they can afford on their monthly salary and how much they can afford to pay per month? Or are they thinking of the ultimate cost of that house over time with all the interest that have been lumped onto it? That's what I thought. Thanks.
I understand the whole monthly class thing and I'm comfortable with that. But I also feel that, you know, we live in a very conservative community and we need to be sensitive to saying we're paying interest only and then how that's going to play out. And that, because that, to me, you're not retiring your debt then. You're not building it, you're not doing anything. So I have, I think I'm good with the three scenarios that you seem to like the best with, you know, one, two, or four. I think three is, you know, is not what I would choose or what I would recommend. But I wanted to ask you why we would not, okay. The bonds that we have right now are higher interest than we're anticipating paying for these bonds. Is that correct?
That's correct, based on current market conditions.
Okay, so a message then to the community is somewhat that we're using the funds that we're garnering here to pay down, you know, the higher interest debts first while we're letting the lower interest debt go along. Right? I mean, like if I have two loans or five loans, you know, and I have my top is 9% and my bottom is 2%, I'm going to pay off the 9% one my way down. So is that, is that kind of similar to what we're suggesting that we're doing here?
I think that's, I look upon it a little bit more, but I think it's similar. But you know, your higher interest rate debt's already in place. You already have to pay it the way it's structured. So, right.
You know, and we danced around here, but I want to make crystal clear. And I think everybody knows this because we just went through this with the refinance of hubbo. We're at historic lows in the bond market right now. There is no better time. Bob, you can confirm this, to issue debt. I mean, it's historic.
Yeah, two weeks ago, we were at 45-year lows. And it's come up a bit this week. It's been a very volatile week in the bond market as investors are closing their books for this calendar year. It's been very challenging, but you know, there's cycles like that in the bond market. Try to avoid them if possible. But yeah, interest rates are at historic lows.
Follow up, would you advise, or could we even extend that debt beyond 2024 for the new debt? Or is that not a?
No, you could extend it further out, but I don't see a cause to do it because you are going to have such a dramatic decrease in your debt payment after 2022 that there's really no reason to push it out any further at this time. Plus, if, not only are rates really low right now, the shorter you can get on the yield curves, the more you're going to save now. It seems steeper. That's why it's a little bit compelling to consider some scenarios where you pay back some principal sooner. And that's why, you know, maybe option three, no, I'm sorry, option two is tantalizing because it does lower your interest costs by a little over $1 million by paying off some principal sooner. But yet, it gets it towards the back to fit in your overall structure.
So if there aren't any more, are there any more questions? If not, I'd like to do the same thing we did before, just kind of go around the table and either give me your preferred option, if it's very clear to you, or give me your most preferred and your second preferred, but not your third preferred. All right, how about, okay, Jim, how about can we start with you, knowing that you still have some reservations? But let's just assume, just looking at the funding portion of this, what would you?
I love to make interest. I don't like to pay interest. And so therefore, I'm okay with, you know, we, from scenario one to scenario three, we're going to save over $3 million in interest. And if you're going to go to the public and let them make this decision, you know, I think it's irresponsible to pack on interest if we can't, if we can afford it, avoid it. And I, so saving three to four million dollars in interest makes a lot of sense to me. So three, albeit may not be favorable because it's going to be more expensive on an annual basis for the taxpayer. I believe if they know that they're going to have a three to four million dollar reduction in interest on the overall debt structure, would carry some weight, but that would be, you know, my preference. Short of that, again, scenario two would probably be the second one.
Thanks. Joanne?
I agree with Jim. You know, it's a little more shocking when you get to a $500,000 house to raise it $100. But to go, comparing it to mortgages, you know, if you do a 15-year or a 20-year and not pay so much interest, it just does feel like it's throwing money away at that. So I can't, because it's not a ton of money each month for people. I don't know, but it's always easy to sell 15 and it's 38. And I should find the statistics for you, how many $200,000 homes there are or 300. There, we do have, do you have that?
I don't know if we have it actually, but we do have, you know, the median home income in our community, it's at around 325, the median, a little bit lower, 300 something. Okay, so you know, you're somewhere in that, you know, lower end of that area there, you know, is where the median sits. So you get an idea of, you know, where, if you look at the middle, the second number is what I'm talking about. That's probably more in the range we're talking about. It's somewhere between the first and second number.
Yeah, so you know, I think even someone, you know, making $60,000 a year possibly, it all adds up, but I really, I'd rather go with scenario three and if not, then probably two.
I think what we're stating, I forgot to mention, I was going to summary. And as you two will point out accurately, the additional interest cost is lower, or is more of a scenario one than scenario three. And ultimately, it's up to you which one you choose. I didn't really advocate one or the other, but I want to make sure you have all the information. Is, as I've discussed, you would save $4 million on that scenario. That's assuming the status quo in your current debt structure. Because if at some point, I'm trying to get this lazy word. Probably not hitting it right, but 2000, right there. Let's say you get to some point where you do want to moderate these increases. Because those would be substantial increases at some point. You say you want to keep at 20 million. Well, all this extra principal you're putting here, and say you want to give it 20 million, you'd be pulling that all off and sticking it out here at some point in the future, thereby paying more interest on scenario three than is currently shown, if that makes sense. But that's only if that's contemplated as a future event. And you'll be doing that in time when the interest rates are more of an unknown. Obviously, you don't know what interest rates will be at that time. But if you choose to do that, that principal payment will be pushed off. And so ultimately, scenario three will have a higher interest component attached to it that you wouldn't be able to calculate at this time.
If we restructure.
If you ever chose to restructure. If you choose to pay it as it is, then you would realize that $4 million in savings.
As Bob has mentioned here, one of the significant things we need to look at, you know, it all depends on where the bond market sits and you know, if it makes physical sense to restructure like we just did. But you know, let's say we get four years down the road, we are going to, in our, the blue lines, that's what we currently have. And so we are going to have some pretty steep increases in our debt payments. And so therefore, it will be, you know, very important for the board at that time to consider refinancing or leveling out some of that. So that's what you're referring to. So then, if we were in scenario one or three, correct, or one or four, correct me if I'm wrong, then that would, you know, level that out a little bit and your interest savings wouldn't be as significant.
Yeah, you wouldn't restructure any of the principal you'd be selling as a result of this referendum. Whereas with the other scenarios, especially scenario three, you would be restructuring that principal to move it out at that time. And then you'd end up paying more interest than what is currently shown in these scenarios.
So there's a current situation to understand. But there's also, you know, if we think strategically, you know, it's almost like refinancing a house. You know, at some point, you know, people buy a house and they have like that balloon, you know, or they have some type of escalating. Well, then they plan to restructure. Now, you know, it doesn't always play out that way. I get it. That's right. However, you know, that is something regardless of whether we added Jefferson debt to this or not, we've got to be looking at that. You know, even our blue, you know, exposure here, we have to. You know, even our blue, you know, exposure here, we have to be rethinking what we're doing and how we're doing it, regardless of whether we add 17.6 to it or not.
Okay, Ken, with all that added information.
Sorry, I forgot to mention it the first time.
You know, at first best, certainly you want to reduce, not spend as much money on interest as you possibly can to get the principal paid off and pay the whole loan off as fast. Scenario three interests me in that perspective. Scenario two interests me because I think it's more cost-effective for the individual on a yearly basis, and we're still paying some principal down as a result and saving 1.3 million in that. So my first choice would be scenario two. And then I think it would be a harder presentation to make for scenario three, indicating that people would be paying more even though they could be saving less, and then the restructuring of the debt further down, that might not be a totally accurate, realistic picture on that, on that too. So I guess I would go with scenario two, and then my second choice would be scenario three.
All right, Andy.
I can support any of these because it's just a, it's a value decision, it's not a right or wrong, it's going to be what's going to, what's the community going to support? And having done this through the elementary and the high school and the hubble referendum, you know, you put all these charts out here and talk about ultimate debt service, how much we ultimately wind up paying over the years, and all I keep hearing from friends and neighbors is what's it going to cost me next year? And that's why if you're talking about the sale of the, of the idea of getting this done, it's scenario four, scenario one, which are pretty much identical. So scenario four would be my first choice, and scenario two would be the second choice because of that question that people tend to ask is what's it mean to my taxes tomorrow? Not what is it in aggregate, just as if we all looked at our home when we finally pay it off, you go, oh my God, how much I paid for that. Well, the same thing happens with your bonds and your refinancing, you do all these things. So the daily person I think on the street, this is based on past experience, is what's it going to mean to my taxes next year? And with a median, median home value of 260 or 250, somewhere in that range, you're talking about people being impacted by $15 to $25 under one scenario, or perhaps $60 to $40 in another scenario. Now, that's a lot of money to some people on a day-to-day basis. So I prefer to push that debt service out to those who are going to get the most benefit from it also, and that's what I think scenario four does. Costs us a little bit more in aggregate, but paying to the average taxpayer is much less year by year.
Jim?
I agree with Andy's analysis. I understand completely because we all come from a similar background, pay off interest as much as possible, don't incur debt as long as possible. But we're talking about people who are living from year to year, and how many of our residents today will be here in 2024? They're going to want to sell their house and they want to be able to show somebody a lower tax rate on their house to make it more valuable. And I think we do a better service for our residents by going with scenario one or four as opposed to certainly scenario three, maybe even scenario two. Secondly, I think under scenarios one and four, we retain more flexibility. I don't know what sort of debt obligations this district may have to incur in the future years, and if we have to issue bonds for whatever reason, five or 10 years from now, they're going to put on additional tax rate on homeowners who are paying, let's say, for a $500,000 home, $100 more under scenario three, that's going to reduce our flexibility. So I think we retain more flexibility as a district with scenario one and four, we do a better service for our residents under scenario one and four, so I support one of those two scenarios.
Barb? Yeah, I find it's nice to be in the, well, I guess, second to the last chair because you get to hear everybody's arguments and you get to crystallize your own thoughts. And, you know, when I started, I was right there with scenario three, but after listening to what you said, and, you know, listening to everyone around the table, I'm, I'm kind of equally happy with one or four as my first choices. Because I think that, you know, when you look at a, when you look at a home, you look at being in a home seven years, they say, and I don't know if that's changed. But, you know, when I look at a loan like this, I look at a loan over the lifetime of the school. And certainly in scenario one, we're anticipating paying it off in 12 years, the life of the school is going to be 50 years. So in the same thing with scenario four, I just have no problem with that, with, when you talk about restructuring, when you talk about spikes, that all's very scary to me. And I think that the people who are here 10 years from now need to pay their fair share of facilities that we have in our school district. So I'm there with Jim and Andy with one and four. If Andy wasn't one and four, I don't know. Were you one and four? Oh, four and two, okay, well, then I'm with Jim at one and four.
All right. Well, you know, my way of thinking about this is although in my own personal life I like to reduce the amount of interest as much as possible, here we're going out and we're asking people specifically just for this building, it's not like part of our revenue stream where if we save $2 million over $4 million, we can put that in a fund balance. It does, it does increase maybe our debt, you know, the amount of debt limit we have, but it's not really money in our pocket per se, to my way of thinking, like it is if it was, let's say, coming into a revenue stream. So I think of this more as leasing a school as opposed to buying a school where everybody, each generation is, you know, each year is paying their fair share of it. So my preferences would be probably one, but I would put that in the second position because I do think regardless of me saying that, that the community, there's something about not paying any principal that is bothersome. So two is close enough to one in terms of its impact on people that I think two accomplishes both of those, those goals. It minimizes monthly payments and it allows for some payment down of principal. So I say two and then one is where it ends. So now I have this little bingo card of numbers. Yeah, yeah, and...
Can I chime in?
Sure.
I'd like to share my thoughts.
Okay, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
From my seat. And, you know, and clearly, if this was a clear-cut decision, okay, and you, as we went around, everybody, you, this is the issue, you know, you have to, you know, there's choices to be made, and what makes sense to, one person may not make sense to the other person on the other side of the fence. So I think that's something, you know, we have to, you know, think about it. Let me just share my thought, and I was, as I was listening. You know, originally, my thinking was, you know, the scenario one was, made the most fiscal sense right now, today, and for various reasons. However, as I looked at these, you know, I became, I started, I jotted down a few things of why I think four might be a good spot to be in. Let me, let me share why. Is, first of all, four does not extend the debt. One of the kind of conversations I continue to have, and I listen to people, they say, don't extend that debt any further than what it already is. That's a theme I hear when I've talked to people, you know, about, you know, going out to referendum, you know, we don't want to run the debt out further. Interest rate's an issue, but running debt out further also is a concern of people. So that doesn't run it out. Also, the low monthly payment. The low monthly payment, people are living day-to-day, we're having more and more people in our community, you know, living paycheck to paycheck, having to make decisions, and I do believe that's a theme today. It may not be a theme later on, but it is a theme today, and it is something that I think we need to seriously consider. You know, restructuring debt is, and Bob has mentioned it, we need to restructure some of this down the road. And so I think that's something, you know, that he, Bob, pointed out and clarified, you know, that will allow us to recapture some of those, those interest, you know, savings in a restructuring situation. Now with this debt, we're not, we've got to keep in mind, maybe we can't think in isolation just on this debt, it's also that blue line's up there, and we have to, you know, that impacts the total taxpayer. And so that restructuring piece is a key thing that has to be considered. And finally, future debt, and Jeb, you brought that up, you know, we can't take that this is the last bond issue that'll ever happen in District 200. We just put out, you know, our capital development plan, it's got some pretty significant dollars in the very near future that we're going to have to grapple with at this table, thinking about how we can continue to keep our facilities appropriate. So I think these are, as I was listening, and that is a thought from my seat, I think, you know, we have to think in the long term here, not necessarily as just a low monthly payment or big debt or big interest. It's really these four things that I've mentioned in thinking about how we structure this over the long term. But initially, I do believe that monthly payment is forefront in people's minds, you know, if we do go out to ask taxpayers to raise money. I understand the interest, but I think we can answer, I could answer that question and say, you know what, yeah, we, initially, we're looking at this, but we're going to restructure this debt, we're going to stay after this and make sure, look out the best interest to taxpayers in the long run, not only with this debt, but with, you know, current debt, the blue up on the charts. That's my thoughts.
Was that scenario two open to that spiking problem that you were talking about?
Scenario two, you still have the, you know, the blue's there, you saw that spike, you have, you know, you have a peak here, then it drops down, then it comes way up. And so with the purple, and I hope I answered your question here.
Well, so what I'm trying to get at is, I think I heard that three was very problematic in future years.
Right, yeah. Yeah, in all cases, any principal, you know, it depends on ultimately, if you even restructure, what is your target? You know, that will determine how much principal to amortize. Even with scenario two, you are putting some principal into these years, especially this year right here, you can see this, this increase, because what we did is say, okay, if this one's going to go up to here, you might as well fill this one with principal so it's leveled across. So if you end up in a future year saying, hey, we want 22 million, let's say, well then all this principal I put here would get moved out to here at some future date. That's not nearly as much principal as getting moved out in another scenario though.
Well, the reason I was asking is before Dr. Harris spoke, yes, I thought I had a...
Scorecard.
Yes, I thought I had a scorecard, because it seemed to me there were five people who picked scenario two in one of the positions. So I was thinking scenario two.
It's a middle ground. It is. I mean, you look at it, it's a middle ground on interest, it's a middle ground on monthly payment, it is.
Conversely, there are four people who picked either scenario one or four, which are virtually the same, in one of those positions. So I guess what I was going to say is, could we agree that scenario three doesn't seem to be a consensus among us? And then just kind of narrow it down between either the one slash four option or the two option? Yes, oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
By doing that, would that be something that staff could then do pros and cons of each of those two?
Of which two?
Well, pick whatever two you're narrowing down. Think you were narrowing down to four and two, result alike. So if you got four and two, could then you and Bob and whoever else say, here's what you should consider, pros and cons, that are objective pros and cons, not a, I don't like interest or I don't like low payments, one or the other. Could you do that?
We could, do you sort of need to know though, it would be helpful to you to know tonight, going into January's meeting, which way to structure it, or does that not really matter as much?
Not necessarily tonight, okay? If we could narrow it down to a couple, then we could bring back, you know, hey, here it is, and board members could have the next few weeks and really look it over and sort through it themselves. I would like to get off of four, maybe at least down to two, that would be helpful, and then we could put together pros and cons and try to make a decision. You know, Mr. Frally, do you have a timeline in your head? Do we, we do need to have a pretty good idea on the structure moving forward as, you know, the board would, if you're asking you to consider a bond issue, I think you've got to be clear in your head what you're voting for, and one of those things is how much am I asking the taxpayer to add to their tax bill? I mean, whether it's interest or whether it's monthly, yearly payment. I mean, I think that's a decision the board's got to be clear on January 9th if they're going to move forward.
I just want to clarify too, Bill asked me to clarify this, is that these payments we're showing on that summary are annually increases, not, sometimes we'll say monthly, just to make sure that's clear.
Bill, what's your comment here, thinking on, you know, as far as having to end this down to get a clear, January 9th for sure?
Yeah, it's probably, probably have something clarified by, by the 9th is probably, you know, and the overall dollar on obviously has to be solidified, I think we're pretty close to doing that. The structure, I mean, there are some nuances. I'm a proponent of maybe two issues to keep with the bank qualification issue, also allows if the bids come in relatively good that we may not have to issue all the debt, you know, there's advantages there as well, so, but everything we need to get, you know, nailed down.
By January 9th.
Let me ask Joanne and Jim, you were the only, you were the two that had scenario three as your first choice, and I think you both had scenario two as your second choice. So my question is if we were able to have staff develop plan, or pros and cons for scenario two versus scenario one slash four, because I think those are virtually the same. Would that be okay with you, or is that a deal breaker for you, is my question?
Well, again, after hearing all this, I can probably let go of scenario three. Can I just back up? When you just were saying, you weren't saying these amounts were, they're annually, what were you referring to?
Yeah, the estimated tax payment increase in the summary page, those are annual increases in the tax bill, not monthly, just to clarify.
The $15?
A year.
Not a month?
Not a month.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, well, that's...
You know, Joanne, you are right. I mean, I think some people would anticipate, you know, you think about it, you know, a 17.6 million dollar issuance, and I mean, they're going to think it's going to cost more than $15 a year. I mean, it just seems like a lot of money, but you spread it out over all the taxpayers in the community, that's what it takes to get there.
I don't know how I missed that concept, but that's unbelievable that, you know, someone would pay $15 per year for a new school. So I am, in scenario three, I didn't totally understand what you're saying, where it wasn't a for sure thing you could change, because, is that what you're saying?
Well, what I'm saying on scenario three is, this would be the structure put in place if, say we sold the bonds on June 1st, 2013, the exact conditions that I have here. And there's, you can see how these are higher each year, so that's a combination of principal and interest. So if a future board, four to five years from now says, well, we can't allow these, this slope of this curve to occur, and then says we won't pull off principal in these years, fill in this back end area, well, all that principal you're paying, you think you're going to pay off here lowering interest cost, will get moved, if you do that, would be moved out here, and then you'd be paying more interest than I'm currently showing on that scenario for those principal payments.
So those interest differences would not be, would they change if we restructured?
Right. You would still save money off this scenario one, unless rates were just incredibly higher five-year Chanel, you'd still save more interest on scenario three than you would on scenario one or four, but it's just not as much as we're predicting.
So basically, what you're saying is that you may be paying more principal, but it may not be doing you as much good as you think it's going to do you if you end up restructuring.
Exactly.
Yeah, you may be paying more per year for not as much gain as you thought you were making, is a way of looking at it.
But you wouldn't, you wouldn't benefit in these earlier years because you do pay interest payments on these principal payments, and they're at a shorter part, it's getting a little technical here, but it's a shorter area of the yield curve than it is out here. So for the first four or five years, you're paying interest at whatever rate you'd be paying in those years versus if you put it all here and pay that interest rate. So there would be some short-term benefit, but then when you... So there would be some short-term benefit, but then when you pull this principal off and move it out here, you'll be doing that at an unknown interest rate, five years from now. And nobody can predict what that interest rate would be at that time.
So, back to my original question to Joanne and Jim, I'm just trying to determine if any of these scenarios are deal breakers here. If you, if we ask the staff to analyze two versus one and four, and then, I suppose we can make that decision on January 9th?
We'll need to, unless you want to have a special meeting to discuss this first.
Or unless we feel like we're ready to make the decision tonight, but I see a lot of people looking tired here, and...
I could be, I could be swayed to two, if that would help. I don't need to go one or four, I could be swayed to two, I mean, because I think, I think two, we will be paying some principal down, and I think that is something that the community will want to know and want to hear. And yet, we won't be stressing our entire debt structure the way scenario three would be. So maybe two is a, is a good compromise from that point of view, because we're, we are paying some principal, and yet we're not, you know, making that, that curve so steep.
Right. Bob, that also limits that exposure you talked about in scenario three and two, because we are still paying some principal and interest in those scenarios, correct?
Correct.
So, with that in mind, is, is, okay, so two, I'm a two. Andy, are you willing to move to two? Two, okay. Jim?
I'm just not understanding something here. If all four scenarios essentially address a 20-year payout on the bonds, is that right?
Well, no, they would be approximately 11 to 12-year payout.
I'm sorry, 11 to 12-year payout. So if I want to multiply and find out what the total payment would be for this issuance of the bond on scenario for a $200,000 house, I'd multiply 15 times, is it 12?
Well, that would be, in that scenario, remember your, let me go back to that one. In that scenario, the 15-dollar impact for that $200,000 home is shown right there, that little increase.
Right.
But if you did nothing else, obviously, if you never did these bonds, the homeowners would experience a very steep decline in their payment, but they won't experience as much of a decline because of that bill. So in that last year or two years, depending on which scenario, the bill will be higher than it would have been had you not done anything. So the 15-dollar impact is for the first 10 years. And then, so your taxpayers in this scenario are still gonna experience, assuming you never sold another bond for any other purpose or restructured, taxpayers are gonna experience this dramatic drop in their debt service payment. You're gonna go from almost $30 million currently, down to five if you did nothing, but instead of going down from $30 million, you go down to $12 million. So the taxpayers won't see the same amount of decrease that you're, had you not passed the referendum.
You know, one of the things in number two, and one of the issues I pointed out too, it doesn't extend to debt service. I mean, and that, that is something people pay attention to, is whether you're gonna push it out a year, even if it's only a year, in one of those other scenarios. That is something that concerns people, you know, that pushing it out, and so two doesn't push it out yet. No, if you look at it, it doesn't push it out.
I think Andy had asked me really about other school districts. I've never done a deal with a school district that I can recall where the debt was paid off 12 years from the referendum. So in any of these scenarios, you're paying off this debt more rapidly than I've ever had a client do. This is something to keep in mind. Most are going out to full extent of 20 years, you know, and that's because that's all the L.A. law allows. You go to other states like Michigan, for instance, they let go up 30 years on your bonds. So, when you're, because you're building a long-lived asset. So in all these scenarios, you're paying off a long-lived asset in a relatively short period of time.
So, Rosemary, why can't we just have, why can't we suggest an analysis of two, that is four?
We certainly can, but there were two members who had number three as their first choice, and I just wanted to make sure that that, if we had an analysis of that, that that wasn't gonna be a deal breaker, because if it is a deal breaker, we should know that, and that may change our thinking. So I think, Joanne, you're saying that is not a deal breaker to you. You could be comfortable with two?
I could, and just maybe basic question, I could be missing, that when, let's say, scenarios where it's 15 dollars, is it always 15 dollars for the whole, or it's going up?
Right. Well, I think in scenario, option four, it's a little easier to see here, it will be 15 dollars in this scenario every year until the very last year, so the taxpayers wouldn't have had a dramatic drop on their tax bill, going from the blue bar down to this blue bar. If you pass the referendum, it'll go from the orange bar down to this orange bar, so the taxpayers will still have a decline in their overall payment in this scenario for bond and interest, but not as much as it would have been. So the difference between this blue bar and this orange bar will be more than, substantially more than 15 dollars. But then when you get to the subsequent, your whole, in either case, all your bonds will be gone.
And with any of the other scenarios, does it ever go up, let's say, more than the 15?
Well, that would only be in options one and four. On a $200,000 home, it's 15 dollars until the very end, when you pay off all the principal. These other scenarios, you know, like option two, this increase, you can see that increase over the blue bar is approximately the same every year. There's some principal, some interest every year, except for this year, you see a little larger increase, but they were just leveling it off with that year. So for the $200,000 home in that scenario, scenario two, instead of 15-dollar increase, you're experiencing a 19-dollar increase. Here, the increase would be more than 19 dollars over the prior year, or over what it would have been. So when I'm comparing this, I'm comparing over what it would have been had you done nothing. When I'm going across this way and comparing to the prior year, there's no increase over the prior year. There's obviously an increase over what you would have had, that's more than 19 dollars had you done nothing. Does that make sense? And then when you get to this year, you're still falling down quite dramatically, blue bar to blue bar, and then you're falling down, purple bar to purple bar, but just not as much. So, let's say, for hypothetical reasons, or hypothetically, the person's bond and interest portion of his bill is 500 dollars at that peak, variable value, okay? Okay, it says 500 dollars. It would fall to 100 dollars in that scenario. Here, maybe it's five, 19, instead of falling down to 100 dollars, it falls down to only 300 dollars. Do you follow me now?
Right, I guess, so you're saying you can't really separate them, like if I just wanted to look at this referendum and what I'm paying for and not worry about the other ones, even though my bill could fluctuate because of going down? Does that make sense? Can I?
Well, the impact of this referendum in all these years would be 19, and we chose the target here. Oh, whatever. Yeah, it'd be about 19 dollars per year. This year, it would be probably 300 dollars in that last year, but that's where you have to look at it in the aggregate, because you're paying less overall in your bond and interest in the aggregate. You're having a decline in your payment. It's, it's just not as great a decline.
Well, my answer is, I'm comfortable, I'm not really correct with any of them, but I, I agree. I like the idea of getting rid of some of the principal, so I'm good with two or one or four.
And Jim, what about for you?
I'm fine with two or four. The reason why I wouldn't do one is because it extends the term, albeit it's one year, but still, you want to try and have consistency, so when someone looks at a chart, they say, oh, all the current bonds, current debt service as well as the new debt service still ends in 2023, right. That being said, I also believe number two works better than four, in that that balloon payment at the end's about four, five million dollars less, albeit there's another one snuck in there a couple of years prior, but I think that gives people better comfort to know, say, whoa, 16 million dollar balloon payment, I know my taxes are gonna go up, but that's a pretty big, you know, that's a pretty big number, and two minimizes that balloon payment. So that would be the, of the two, that would, two would be my choice of two and four.
Sounds like most people here are comfortable with two. Jim, I think you're the, the champion of four, one or four, but are you comfortable with two? Okay. Is everybody comfortable with that? All right, I think those are the marching orders.
I, you know, looking between one and two, you're talking 4 dollars, you know, you're talking, you know, at 400,000, we're talking 9 dollars per year. Yeah, me too. That's why I got, I mean, I got there, and not extending the debt, I think, that's why I jotted down those four things. Monthly payment, not extending the debt, flexibility to refinance, and then future debt. I mean, that's another component here to think about. So, you know, I think two's a good spot, if the board's comfortable with that, that's where we'll move forward.
Okay, very good. Anything else for the good of the order in this discussion? No? Thank you so much. It was really very helpful and very clarifying, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Bob.
Matt, if you're gonna confuse us again, no.
I was just gonna say, if you picked a scenario, like scenario two ultimately, and you target for, say, a 300,000 home, you pick 30, you just say, we want it to be 30 dollars, we want it to be 35. And when you sell the bonds, if we sell them at a better rate than we think we're going to, obviously, if you just keep it at 35, but we could have had it at 30 because of lower interest rates, we can shove that principal forward and keep it at the 35, lowering the interest payments over time more. So that way, the number you pay, we try to keep that always the same, but by filling, by either moving a little bit of principal out or moving it back in. So, really, ultimately, if you're focusing on scenario two, what you can laser in and focus on is, say, for a 300,000 home, just close to your meeting home, we want the bill to go up by 30 dollars, 35 dollars, and that could be your scenario two. And then when we sell the bonds, we can make the principal fit into that.
That's your job, right?
Yes.
Good, okay, got it. Very good. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you all. We have reports from board members, unless they're pressing, I'm gonna say, maybe we could wait until next month, we have learning and teaching?
No, we have to give you a report.
Okay. Oh, you do? Oh, cool.
We have some critical decisions coming up, so otherwise I wouldn't bother you with this, but, and I'm sorry, I did not bring my notes, so this is all from memory, so you might have to fill in for me. The report card committee has been busy at work, that is the most crucial thing that is going to, I shouldn't say crucial, it's gonna be the most visible change to the parents of the community, will be the report card, for, the elementary report card, I'm sorry, elementary report card. And the biggest change will be, first of all, the math will be an insert this year, and, and next year, I'm sorry, next year, yeah, when Common Core is implemented, and, wait, I'm looking for faiths in my head, but anyway, it will be, it will be an insert, it will be standards-based, because the prior report card was standards-based, and that's the most valuable information for the parents to have, so the report card will be changed based on the standards, and elementary report cards will be now done on a trimester basis, with very, very good academic reason for that. First of all, for, to really get a good timeline for student progress, a trimester at the elementary level makes more sense, because if you're teaching, and you're teaching some pretty heavy-duty stuff, you need to give those kids time so you could reteach it, so they can learn it, because don't forget, this whole new curriculum will be taught to mastery. So it would be better to have a longer time period, which to grade, you know, make those grades for the students. The other, the answer that I say for the parents will be, if they have kids at other levels, they're not dealing with issues from all different schools at the same time. The elementary student will have a, you know, it'll be a little bit of different timing, and so the, the parent can deal with, with that student's progress, and maybe parent-teacher visits, whatever, at a different time of year, separate from the other two. So it's gonna be a change, and I'm hoping, you know, we can roll it out in such a way that parents aren't frightened of it. But the staff really supported this change, and, and we feel, as a committee, and staff feels, that this is a very important thing to do as we implement Common Core. That's about all, I think, unless...
Oh, oh, one more thing. Very good from memory, excellent. As Barb said, the trimester was something the staff really wanted, and they felt, staff here feels, that'd be a real boost in their morale and support, and we're listening to them. Other districts have moved to the trimester, and the committee does need to, or the staff needs to train everyone for the new math and the, to go with report cards, and the math portion has to be done by next April, so they do need to get a, an answer from us. Is that tonight, or were we thinking January? But, yeah, they, this is a lot of work for them, and so if we can help them move it along, it'd be great.
Anything faiths that you'd like to add in regard to the...
Just that the work on the trimesters needs to happen pretty quickly, because all of the math pacing guides either need to be written by quarter or by trimester, and we already did go through and have all the schools talk about this at faculty meetings, overwhelming support that they like to go to trimesters, already talked through the PTA president's support for trimesters, I've talked to a lot of parents, and while it isn't something that we would generally bring to the board for approval, we didn't want you to be surprised or have the board saying, oh, we don't think that's a good idea, because the clock has started ticking in the work that I need to do to get this done by next school year.
I think that's great, and it seems to me, as long as you touch bases a little with the parents and start talking to them, I think that's the key. Certainly, our staff knows what's best professionally, but making sure that the parents are blind sided by it is good.
There are several parents on the committee currently, as well as faith will be meeting with the district VTA.
I'm a goddess, is this eight weeks now, is that what happens when you go to trimesters? Eight-week periods?
Right now, since there's 36 weeks in the school, it's about nine weeks for quarters, so then we'll be to 12 weeks.
Yeah, 'cause now six, 12, grade six through 12 will stay on quarters. Yeah, okay. That won't change, this is just elementary.
Very good. Spit job.
He sees you in the jewel, and you won't be surprised. So he sees you in the jewel and says, what is this about trimester report cards? You won't be surprised. Okay?
Thank you. Topics for future discussion, as Dr. Harris alluded to, we're gonna be getting some curriculum updates, as well as, of course, at our January 9th meeting, we're gonna be voting on the Jefferson Project, announcements from board members, or anything else, committee, the hall is January 23rd, chance to chat is January 26th, that's gonna be at the SSC from 9:00 to 10:30. Our next regular meeting is January 9th at Hubble Middle School at 7:30. Public comments on non-agenda items, we have one person, Harold Longs. Harold, we know the drill, three minutes, and we won't add on it tonight.
Guess it's on, okay. Some interesting information came out from the architect. I just noticed the classrooms, you know, went from 13 to 20 classrooms, which is about a 50% increase, and on top of that, I also noticed that the classroom size increased 50% on top of, on top of it. So we're like almost doubling the number of classrooms and doubling the size of the classrooms for the, you know, the population we currently have. That's, that's the only comments I have on Jefferson regarding the size, but now, and also, the one thing about the chart with the other districts, it didn't show any enrollment numbers, so you can make any kind of comparisons about the certain number of classrooms to the size of the classrooms. Now, the financing thing by PMA was very interesting. I, I kind of agree with, well, Jim and Joanne initially, that number three, and the reason why. why. Why does the district really want to backload the principal payments? When you look at the chart that was presented earlier, in about, we're currently paying $15 million a year in debt service. In about six more years, we'd be paying $20 million. In nine years, we're at $25 million, and in year number 11, we're at $30 million. You know, and this, well, I assume some of these board members are here for a while, the board has approved all these increases to keep the taxes low years ago, only to watch the balloon in the years coming forward. And those, those questions about refinancing the debt in later years will not lower the overall payments, because it's mainly principal and not interest payments. Even if you've got the lower rate, those monthly, those yearly payments are still going to be there in the debt service. In order to level out the debt, you would really need to restructure the whole debt and extend the debt out further to take advantage of the low interest rates and to lower your debt service payments in the future. So I still think the number three is the best way, even if you restructure the older debt, at least you have even payments with the current debt you just restructured, that you just placed. And then in the future, if you restructure it, and you have to push it out a little bit, you don't have to restructure it here, that 2022 and 23 payment, and on top of it, because that's going to have a spike in the future. So I think if you're going to look at strategically, you got to look at the whole picture and not just pieces of it. I think number three probably makes more sense if you're going to restructure the future debt. That's my ideas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And public com, let's see, that was public comments on non-agenda items. Closed session, we didn't have need for a closed session. Should be very brief, personnel pending litigation, no action will be taken. I will look for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Barb. Seconded by Ken. All in favor, say aye. Oh, we need a roll call. Sorry. That's right, because we're going to close. All right, call for the vote.
Mrs. Ittihad? Yes. Mr. Knicker?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Packhill?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes, we're adjourned to closed session. Thank you.